Okay.
Call the meeting.
Call the meeting to order. We need to approve the minutes first.
Yeah.
Everybody get a chance to look at them?
Or, sorry, roll call.
Roll call, sorry.
I bet. Wayne Feldmeyer.
Hey.
Larry Galstead.
Here.
John Glasspool. Franklin Hahn.
Here.
Case Monson.
Here.
And Eric Johnson.
Here.
And Josh Grant. Thanks for having me. Now you can go with minutes.
Everybody get a chance to read the minutes?
No.
I make a motion to approve the minutes as printed.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carried. Okay.
I do just want to make one announcement quick before we get going. I guess I don't know if anybody here is waiting for that, but the 5:40 hearing for Bruning Rock product and G Cube has been canceled. Or they withdrew their application last week, so that is no longer taking place.
So they canceled it or postponed it?
Well, they withdrew their application, so it technically is canceled until we get, we'll start the process over again.
Okay. First up, GSS?
So please take notice that an application has been made by GSS on behalf of Cloud One Services LLC and Alan and Barbara Schmitz at 12079 State 44 in Caledonia for a conditional use permit to build a telecommunications tower in the Ag Protection District in Mayville Township. And that's in Section 7, Township 102, Range 5 of Houston County on parcel 090070001. Said applicant standing and making application is as fee owner said described lands and leases said described lands. A hearing on this application will be held at the Houston County Commissioners' Room in Caledonia at 5:20 PM on Thursday, August 28th of 2025. All persons having an interest in the matter may attend the hearing or submit comments relative to the granting or denying of said application. And comments should be mailed to the Environmental Services Department at 304 South Marshall Street or emailed to zoning@hokomin.gov. It must be received by Tuesday, August 19th of 2025 to be included for review prior to the hearing. All comments are considered public record, and that was advertised on August 13th of 2025.
Okay. Can the applicant come forward? Say your name in the microphone, please.
Good evening. My name is Mike Heisenka. I'm a project manager for GSS. GSS is located at 3311 109th Street in Urbandale, Iowa. As Amelia pointed out, I'm here on behalf of Cloud One Services, representing their interests. Cloud One is proposing the construction of a 300-foot guide telecommunications tower at 12,079 State Highway 44, right outside of Caledonia city limits, by way of conditional use permit. And I'm here this evening to address any questions or concerns anyone may have regarding the proposal.
So I assume when you get that much height, you have to have a light on it at all times too, or not? Or isn't that, doesn't that?
Yes, sir. That's a requirement per the FAA. Any tower that's over 200 feet.
Okay.
They're required to light them. Sometimes shorter towers are required to have lights, but that typically is due to proximity to airports.
So how many, how many customers are, no, you're calling customers this tower gonna service? Quite a few?
The, the tower is purpose-built for four carriers. It, it's structurally capable of handling four antenna arrays from day one. And we also have the sufficient ground space to handle any electrical equipment, et cetera, that those carriers may have.
Okay.
AT&amp;T is the anchor tenant? And there's gonna be fencing around the?
Yes, sir.
Is that fencing something that you decide to put up? Or is it guideline? I mean, is it, is it state mandated? Or I'm just curious.
Think, in, in some instances, off the top of my head, I don't know the answer to that, sir. In some instances, the, the fencing that we put up is based on guidance from the telecommunication ordinance for whatever jurisdiction we're working in. I don't believe that's the case here. So the, the fencing that's being proposed is, I guess you would say, an industry standard. Typically, and I could go through the construction drawings very quickly and probably find that it's, I think they're typically six feet in height, and then they have an additional one foot of, they call them security strands, just barbed wire across the top.
Okay.
To prevent anybody from getting in there and doing any, anything they shouldn't be doing.
I read that you have it figured in here for tower failure, 120-foot radius? That it won't fall on anybody's parcel, or?
Yes, sir. That's correct. The, this, these particular towers are designed to collapse within a 120-foot radius. It's 40% fall zone is, is what it's referred to as. And as proposed, if I remember correctly, I can go through my project proposal here, I think. In the unlikely event of tower failure, tower's engineered to collapse within a 120-foot radius. No portion of the tower, if that were to happen, no portion of the tower would fall onto any adjacent properties, nor would it fall on any existing structures on the subject property. The closest residential structure is the home of Alan and Barbara Schmitz, and that's approximately 250 feet away from the base of the tower.
And it's sitting on their parcel, right?
Yes, sir.
How long of a lease do you make with them?
50 years.
50 years? You're sharing their driveway, obviously, or access there?
Yes, sir. Their, their driveway will be utilized as our, as part of our access utility easement. It's a varying width, I believe, of anywhere from 30 to 50 feet. So we'll, we'll run in power and fiber within that utility easement.
Oh, okay.
The specific path for that actually can be seen on Sheet A1. It's actually Page 2 of the construction drawings, if you have it.
Yeah, the red.
Which was commencing off of State Highway 44, running through their driveway and then into the, the targeted lease area for construction.
It's Page 36.
Oh, I apologize.
So do you have a tower elsewhere?
I'm not sure I understand your question, sir.
In, in close proximity of this site, or?
So far as I know, we do not. We, let me say that differently. I work for GSS. We're a telecommunication consulting firm. And I'm here on behalf of Cloud One Services. And to my knowledge, they do not have a nearby tower.
The tower that's on Becker's, do we know who?
Yeah, that's SBA. Do you guys want to jump to public, to that public comment?
Oh, yeah. We got this comment here.
So we had this comment come in late. I don't know if you had a chance to look at it. I did, I just sent it to you today. So I apologize. But were you able to get that, Mike?
Yes, I apologize, Amelia. When you sent it, I, I guess I, I didn't know it was, I didn't know it was in reference to tonight.
Oh.
So I did read it.
Okay.
But it's, it was on the, an email that said September agenda, so I-
Oh, yes, it did. Sorry. I just-
I just completely misunderstood.
I can give you, I mean, if you want to-
No, I, I read through it.
So I can, I'll just read it, I guess. So we typically do that for anything that comes in after the, after the deadline, so it doesn't make in your board packet. So dear members of the Planning Commission, my name is Sean Welter, and I am the Site Marketing Manager for SBA Communications Corporation in Minnesota. It is my job to interact with wireless carriers who have located or are interested in locating onto an SBA cell tower. I maintain an open line of communication with the carriers to discuss tenant issues, including but not limited to colocation, new equipment, centerline placement of equipment onto SBA cell towers and other related matters. This would include the cell tower SBA has owned, operated, and maintained since August of 2014 nearby on property commonly known as 14109 State 76 in Caledonia, which he references will be existing cell tower. Cloud One Services has submitted a conditional use permit application to the Houston County Planning and Zoning Department requesting to construct a new 300-foot guide telecommunications tower. The proposed tower is just 0.5 miles from the existing cell tower. As with all other matters, the carriers have previously been directed to send any communication related to SBA's cell towers in Minnesota to my attention. Accordingly, I was quite surprised by Cloud One's application as I regularly communicate with the carriers. Upon learning about this application, I reached out to our current tenants and was informed that this proposal is unrelated to their present networks. However, after reviewing our corporate records, I can confirm that SBA most certainly can accommodate an additional carrier at the existing site and is willing to evaluate modifications to accommodate the carrier at that same height as the proposed tower. Such modifications is maybe needed to accommodate a carrier at a higher height or for more or larger equipment are commonly, common practice in the telecommunications industry. And accordingly, there is an ample structural capacity for the existing cell tower to handle more equipment as SBA constructed the existing cell tower to house multiple tenants. We look forward to continuing to work with Houston County to provide access to wireless networks via SBA's telecommunications infrastructure, and that very truly yours, Sean Welter. Along with that, there was a map, for the record, to show the, the distance between the two. He also included a memo to explain our radio frequency coverage plot analysis for their Mayville Township tow, tower, so that's the existing one. And then there are maps to show those radio frequencies for different 700 megahertz, 850, and 1900 and 2150. Or 2100, sorry.
Isn't this out where that propane place is? Isn't this where this tower is?
The tower that he's proposing?
Yeah.
It'll be, so as you leave Caledonia on 44 and kind of hit at the top of the hill, it'll be up on the right there.
It'll be before that propane tank.
Oh, before it?
Yep, right, right outside of Caledonia.
So SBA Communications Corporation says here it's a real estate investment trust. Do you know anything about them?
Yeah, SBA is a telecommunications tower company, like American Tower Company.
So it's your, it'd be your competition, then, basically?
It would be Cloud One Services' competition. That's correct. I can respond to that. I don't know if that's appropriate for me to respond to those comments.
Sure, sure.
Yeah.
Go ahead. I just want to hear your thought.
So I'm not a radio frequency engineer. I just do site acquisition work. I work with interested property owners and jurisdictions on seeing if we can get these types of proposals to pass. In terms of the, the location, we did have an evaluation from the radio frequency engineer that I serve for Cloud One Services, their purposes, working with AT&amp;T. So just to cut across the field, I can't speak to the effectiveness of putting AT&amp;T's equipment on that tower. But I know that the location that was evaluated was evaluated for ground elevation, things like coverage and capacity, making sure that they're serving customers in the best way they possibly can. I'm not, I'm not, it's, it wouldn't be the first time that another tower company has, for lack of a better way to say it, done their best to force a carrier to locate their equipment on their tower, because that's part of their business model, is they get revenue, they get a revenue stream from carriers locating their equipment on those towers. So it was, I don't, I don't believe, it's my understanding that there wasn't any speci, Amelia, please correct me if I'm wrong, there wasn't any specific language that said that we needed to, what's the right way to put this? There was no specific separation language in the ordinance?
Correct.
And so, you know, sometimes when that's the case, I need to go back to the radio frequency engineers that we work with and say, you need to give me something more. I can't just show up at a zoning hearing and say, they need a tower here. You, you need to provide propagation maps, et cetera. I don't know if those are, I don't believe I provided those with our application because that standard wasn't part of the zoning ordinance requirements. But I certainly would be more than happy to go back to our radio frequency engineers and say, please provide me with a before and after on available centerlines for equipment on the existing tower and compare it to before and after coverage for what's being proposed at a, you know, roughly 294 feet, plus whatever difference in, in elevation. So I, I can cer, that's something I can certainly do. But in terms of which one covers best, I, I can't, I can't speak to that.
Okay. Well, we're working under the ordinance we have now, right? So.
Yeah, and we have very minimal requirements for telecom towers. A conditional use permit is basically what it says.
Are you looking to propose more towers in the county?
About nine more.
In Houston County?
Correct. In Houston County jurisdiction.
So all these towers, do they provide service for cell phones?
Yes, sir.
So then our rates will go down to half.
Um, I don't want to speak to that either. I'm not sure that's a, there's a direct correlation.
You should be able to provide better coverage, then. I mean, that's the idea, right?
That's the, absolutely. That's the idea.
I mean, AT&amp;T, it's always been known for not being the best coverage in this area.
So this is probably a little bit more than you care to hear, but this is one of 60-plus towers that our company has been tasked with citing in southeastern Minnesota. I have 13 sites in Fillmore County, 10 in Houston, another handful in Mauer, another handful in Olmsted County. And then we're, we're doing some other sites as well. I would say, just generally speaking, southeastern Minnesota is a vastly underserved area of the country.
I have a question for you. So in order to get service, I live in the valley. You, I have to go through a computer to get, in the hollies, to get service. Is your company planning on putting tower in the valley to serve the valley people? Or don't you, can't you answer that?
You'll have to forgive me. I don't, I don't, I'm from Des Moines, Iowa. I don't know what the valley means.
Well, we got our hills here, you know, our peaks here, southeastern Minnesota. You get down off the top, you don't get any service.
Okay, I understand. Just generally speaking, the valley, yes. It's, it's very, very difficult to, to provide comprehensive coverage for a lot of these, they're referred to as terrain-driven areas. I'll give you an example. Wayland is an area we're trying to put up a tower. You go, you drive through the scenic, you know, bluff highway there.
Yeah.
It, it's SOS on my phone. Like, I couldn't, I couldn't call 911, or maybe that would be the only thing that I could actually get through. But you, it's, you enter a black hole. And so that's part, it's been my understanding all along that that's part of the drive for Cloud One Service and AT&amp;T to kind of fill in the gaps as best as they can to say that they'll be able to cover all those areas. Probably not. Just, you know, educated guess. It's highly unlikely that there will ever be perfect coverage in these highly terrain-driven areas. Some of that has to do with where, where can you put towers that will provide the best coverage? And then how does that compare to, say, environmental standards? Fillmore County, I mentioned, I am building several, or trying to build several towers there. You can't propose anything in their bluff, bluff land overlay for, you know, that's part of their, their zoning ordinance. And so those would be the prime spots to put a tower in order to provide the best coverage. And I understand why they don't want to do it, but just in a, kind of to help you understand some of the challenges that these tower companies face. But yes, I mean, the, the very short answer is the idea behind all these towers that they're building is to provide better coverage for the region as a whole.
The maps you talked about before in the comparison and service, what, what the tower you're proposing to build could provide versus the tower that's there does provide?
Yes, sir.
Have you seen those or not?
No, we haven't, we haven't developed them.
You haven't?
And we, and the reason they weren't developed is because that wasn't a standard we were prepared to address or realized that would need to be addressed. But I can, I'd be more than happy to go back to our client, specifically to their radio frequency engineers, and say, this is something that we need to provide to Houston County. They've requested it, if you request it. Happy to go back to them and say, let's look at these two towers. If I remember correctly, that where we're proposing is a pretty nice elevation. And then, of course, we're proposing a tall tower there. And I believe, again, if I'm thinking of this correctly, the tower that, this SBA tower, I believe it's a self-support tower that's shorter to start out with. And I believe it's at a shorter elevation. So again, I'm not surprised that SBA has said, you know, we, we think it would be just fine for them to put their equipment on our tower. That's their business model, is to get carriers to locate their equipment on their towers. Our client has evaluated the area, and they think that a new tower would best serve their, their needs into the future, and the needs of the area into the future. But if, if, certainly if the, the Planning Commission would, would like to see some more, I don't know, detailed information about propagation, is what they're referred to as, I can request those propagation maps and submit them to your office and, for review.
So have there been any other comments, Amelia, from neighbors?
No, that was the only one.
Notices were sent out, right?
Yes. I guess you could, I have a public comment.
Yeah. Any other questions from the board?
Someone's good demand.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I want to ask a public.
Yeah. We have public comment on the matter? Yeah, we do. You can, you can go back to your CDs and come up. Please. State your name in the microphone and-
Certainly. I'm Trevor Oliver. I'm the law firm of Burns &amp; Hanson in Golden Valley, 8401 West Attlet Boulevard, Golden Valley, here on behalf of SBA. And I, did you hand out? I saw that people had the maps. I did. I don't know if you handed out the-
They got the whole packet.
They got the whole pack, okay. So I've got a lot of extra paper here. Really just one come up, and the, this is kind of, this is a focus point. I'd say, whether it's clear from the letter or not, one of the criteria that you have in your ordinance for conditional use permit is to demonstrate a need for what's being proposed. And in the application, it says there is no suitable place nearby to co-locate the, this, these antennas. And obviously, SBA's position is, well, yes, there is. And I think the key points there are, A, just the existence of the tower, how close it is to the proposed site, the maps showing that there's not that much of a functional difference. And the statement being that the site, the tower itself has structural capacity to be expanded and to carry additional antennas. And SBA is also open to the idea of recon, you know, recon, I wouldn't, reconstructing is maybe the wrong word, but adding on to the tower to accommodate taller heights, if, if necessary. And that it's often a situation where a carrier will come in and make a colocation request. And my folks tell me that they, the reason for saying in the letter, I'm surprised to hear about this application, is nothing. You know, there's been no requests, no communication about even attempting to co-locate on the, the tower on Highway 76.
You're, you're referring to the one on Becker property?
Correct. The one, yeah, right. The one just north of Caledonia.
So you would let them be on your tower for a minimal fee, or?
Well, I can't speak to the business side of it. I just know that the folks who do run the, the engineering side of it say they've got the capacity, they can expand if necessary. And they're, you know, they feel it's built for at least three, if not more, tenants. I believe there's currently two on there right now.
So who do you represent?
SBA Communications Corp.
Okay. What's Burns &amp; Hanson?
That's my law firm.
So you're a lawyer for SBA?
Correct.
Anybody have any questions for? Bye, there.
Okay. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Do we have any other public comment on the tower? Any other questions? Should we review the findings?
Yeah. I was just looking to see if we had record. We have the initial tower build, and then one permit to add equipment. So likely is only two at, at the Becker location.
Get a permit every time they add a carrier? Or they're supposed to?
Yeah.
You want to repeat that, Amelia? I couldn't hear that.
So we have the initial permit to construct the tower, and then it looks like we have one permit from 2019 to add equipment to existing cell tower. Without pulling all the plans, I guess, I don't know for sure exactly what it is, but we do typically permit the colocation of a new carrier and then the guy-
They'd have to come and get a permit to co-locate at a, say, at that tower, at the existing tower.
Yeah, because there's typically like a generator or some kind of cabinet on the ground.
Especially if they're going to, if they were to rebuild it or make it bigger, they'd have to get a permit for that.
Yeah, I'd have to look into that. But I imagine if they, in the scenario, if he was going to go from a 200-foot tower to a 300-foot tower, that likely would require maybe an amendment to the CUP. But I guess I would have to look into that a little closer. You, you guys want to go with the findings? Or would you, I mean, you mentioned additional information.
I'm fine to go with the findings.
Thank you for that.
Fair with the findings.
I'm fine.
So number one, that the proposed use conforms with the county land use plan. Steph Analysis states that Houston County's vision statement is to provide quality, essential, and affordable public services to the community, and the effect of having improved communication services is in our moment in reaching many of the supporting policies and goals outlined in that land use plan.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Number two, that the applicant demonstrates a need for the proposed use. Steph Analysis states that there is not a comparable colocatable structure available in this vicinity.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Number three, that the proposed use will not degrade the water quality of the county. Steph Analysis states that the applicant has identified that there were no long-term uses associated with this proposal that have the potential to degrade water quality. All topsoil removed during construction will be regraded and seeded upon completion to minimize erosion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
Number four, that the proposed use will not adversely increase the quantity of water runoff. Steph Analysis states that the applicant identifies that standard design for tower projects includes leveling of tower compounds and access drives. There will be a 2,500-square-foot gravel compound in what is currently a grassy strip between ag fields, but the tower and ground component should not adversely increase the quantity of water runoff.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carried.
Five, that soil conditions are adequate to accommodate the proposed use. Steph Analysis states that geotechnical reviews will be conducted before the foundation is designed, but the applicant does not believe soils will be prohibitive. NRCS has a soil classified as a silt loam, which is the predominant soil in the county. And there is nothing within the description to indicate that there may be issues citing a structure.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carried.
Number six, that the potential pollution hazards have been addressed and that standards have been met. Steph Analysis states that pollution hazards should be limited. Waste generation from construction and maintenance of items construction, and maintenance of items such as batteries, diesel fuel, or propane for generators, and electronic waste will need to be disposed of properly.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Motion carried.
Number seven, that adequate utilities, access roads, drainage, and other necessary facilities have been or are being provided. Analysis states that this proposal will utilize existing driveway access and easement, including both road access and utilities as part of the scope of this project, along with the extension of both underground electric and fiber optic lines.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Motion carried.
Eight, that adequate measures have been or will be taken to provide sufficient off-street parking and loading space to serve the proposed use. Analysis states that outside of the initial construction, there will be periodic check-ins at this location, and there will be space within the leased area for parking for maintenance employees.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed?
Question on that, who's going to check, check on it? Who's supposed to check on it?
On whether they're utilizing.
Yeah, you said you're periodically going to check in on these locations. Who's going to do it?
Oh, I guess I was referencing, like, employees for the carriers.
The company will be periodically checking on the tower, and there's adequate parking space for the.
Okay, just wondering.
Checking generators and equipment. So nine, that facilities are provided to eliminate any traffic congestion or traffic hazard which may result from the proposed use. This was not applicable, but we didn't vote on that in the beginning, so you'll just have to vote quick now.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Carry.
That the conditional use will not be injurious to the use and enjoyment of other property in the immediate vicinity for the purposes already permitted. Analysis states that this proposal will be most intrusive to the landowner, but they made the decision to lease out the site. Cell towers do create a visual impact, but the Planning Commission may feel the benefit outweighs that cost. And in addition, there is another tower in close proximity, so the visual plight is not out of character for this neighborhood.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Just a question on that, are the landowners here? No?
No, I don't.
Okay.
They did sign off.
Yeah, I assume so, they leased it out, so.
So eleven, that the establishment of the conditional use will not impede the normal and orderly development and improvement of surrounding vacant property for predominant uses in the area. Analysis states that this is a transition area on the outskirts of the city of Caledonia. Closer to the city is residentially zoned and heavily populated further from town, it changes, I should reread that, closer to the city is residentially zoned and heavily populated, and further from town, it changes to farm and non-farm dwellings and predominantly tillable land. This proposal will remove minimal land from production and will not impact adjacent landowner's ability to construct dwellings.
Isn't this land on grassland, pastureland? I mean, the site? I remember right?
Yeah, it's kind of in between.
In between two fields, or?
Yeah. Looks like they maybe used it for staging bales, or?
Yeah, it's in the edge, field edge, or whatever.
Yeah.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Motion carried.
Twelve, that adequate measures have been or will be taken to prevent or control offensive odor, fumes, dust, noise, and vibration, so that none of these will constitute a nuisance and to control lighted signs and other lights in such a manner that no disturbance to neighboring properties will result. Analysis states that this proposal will not include any offensive odor, fumes, dust, noise, or vibration. Tower lighting will be in accordance with FAA regulations.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Motion carried.
Number thirteen, that the density of any proposed residential development is not greater than the density of the surrounding neighborhood, or not greater than the density indicated by the applicable zoning district. This was not applicable.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Carry.
Number fourteen, that the intensity of any proposed commercial or industrial development is not greater than the intensity of the surrounding uses, or not greater than the intensity characteristic of the applicable zoning district. Analysis states that this is considered a commercial use, but there are no density requirements for these proposals, and there are towers throughout the county in areas of higher population concentration, and that makes us a reasonable location to cite another telecommunications tower.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Motion carries.
Number fifteen, that site-specific conditions and such other conditions are established as required for the protection of the public's health, safety, morals, and general welfare. Analysis states that the FCC is responsible for setting and monitoring parameters on health and safety standards related to cell, cellular phone towers. Issuance of permits indicates that they believe those standards have been or will be met, and in addition, the proposer has cited the tower in a location that should have minimal impact to structures, public roads, and neighboring properties in the event of a collapse.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Motion carried.
I got a question on number 10. Now, you said this is a 50-year lease to the landowner. What happens if the landowners pass away? The land goes sold, does that continue on to the new landowner? Or how, what happens?
That's correct.
Yeah.
Okay.
That would be treated like an ingress egress across somebody's property. If there's an ingress egress and you buy the property, when it's sold, that ingress egress is still in pores.
That sounds correct.
It's a conditional use, so that stays with the land.
Mm-hmm.
Conditional use permit.
Be right in your abstract.
I guess myself, I wouldn't mind seeing the maps of what we anticipate the benefit having another tower so close to another one would be.
So you want to table it until then, or?
Myself, I, I would say I'd like to see that, but that's, that's my opinion. You guys think?
How accurate would this study be, in your estimation? It's just a shot in the dark, or is there?
No, I wouldn't, I, I wouldn't say that, but again, I'm hesitant to speak to just how accurate it is, because that's not my area of expertise. I, I know that our client works hand-in-hand with AT&amp;T. They have quite a few tools at their disposal in order to provide a pretty accurate, you know, depiction of before-and-after coverage. I would guess that if we could get available center lines for the existing tower, you know, we have one A coordinates, sorry, specific coordinates where we could say, this is the location, the ground elevation, this is where the equipment would go on this tower, do the same for the other tower, and then give a before-and-after picture for the area. Mind that they're trying to basically fill in gaps. This is one piece of the puzzle, so to speak, for the area. It's not just about covering this area, it's about connecting with the other towers that will be eventually proposing surrounding areas.
So could he provide that to you, Amelia, when you give the permit out?
So just proposing it as a condition?
Condition?
Proof? How would you phrase that? Yes. That you just want it on hand, or do you want?
Yeah.
Review?
Well, shouldn't we find out what the benefits are going to be before we make a decision to approve it or deny it?
Well.
I'm asking.
It would get.
Is that, is that something that could be done in a month?
Yeah, I think we could probably get a pretty quick turnaround on a comprehensive evaluation of the two sites. I would, again, just need some information on available center lines for the SBA tower. You know, I could just make the request and, you know, have them expedite it. However you want, however you want to do it.
Well, we, we should have did that before we went through the findings, is what I'm thinking. I mean, we've already went through the findings, and now we're going to pull back. I mean, I guess we could start it all over again.
You have, nobody has motion to accept the findings yet, but yes.
Right.
I guess that would go towards number two, whether it's a real need for it or not.
Mm-hmm.
Well, we're going to have more of these, I'm quite sure, coming up.
Sounds like it.
So if we are going to demand this from this specific tower, then in all fairness, we have to demand it from the next tower.
Everything going forward.
The next nine.
Yeah, well, he said nine, but I understand we may even have one next month. I don't know that for a fact, because.
I guess just to throw it out there, some of them may not have other towers in close proximity, though. I, I think this concern is because of this one being within a half mile.
That's my thought behind it.
Are those towers held up by wires?
This one is proposed to be, yeah.
That's something we should address, because towers over by La Crescent were held up by wires. The landlords really complained.
Yeah, our current ordinance doesn't dictate that they can't be.
Yeah.
Well, then I guess we should table it until we get more information.
Probably right.
So if we get more information, do we have to go through the findings again?
Yeah.
Well, we haven't approved the findings yet, so.
I know we haven't.
I know that those wires, they go out a long ways, and the farmers, you know, they took a lot of their land because of it.
All this is contained on that parcel, Wayne, so.
Yeah, oh, it is.
As part of the lease area.
It's part of the whole lease area, so that's not a concern.
Okay.
Is there a motion, one way or the other?
Motion to table it until we review those maps.
I'll make a motion to table until we get further information.
We have a second?
I'll think of it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
You looking for maps? Thank you.
Okay. Onward to number three. Or six o'clock. Canaleed. Read that, Amelia.
So the 541.
No, and this one here.
Ready?
Yeah, go ahead.
So please take notice that an application has been made by Canaleed Minnesota LLC and Minnesota RE 1570 61, Highway, US Highway 1461 LLC, for an interim use permit to operate a cannabis microbusiness in the Highway Business District in La Crescent Township on the following premises, it's part of Government Lot 6 in Section 11 Township 104, Range 4 in Houston County, and its parcel ID 080134000. Said applicant standing and making application is SBA owner of said described lands. A hearing on this application will be held at the Houston County Commissioner's Room in Caledonia at 6:00 PM on Thursday, August 28th. All persons having an interest in the matter may attend the hearing or submit comments relative to the granting or denying of said application. And comments should be mailed to the Environmental Services Department, 304 South Marshall Street in Caledonia, or emailed to zoning, and must be received by Tuesday, August of 19th in 2025 to be included for review prior to the hearing. All comments are considered public record, and this was advertised on August 13th of 2025.
Okay, will the applicant come forward?
So, yes, this is a cannabis microbusiness, but they will be focusing on retail only.
Is your name in the microphone, please?
Yes, my name is Aaron Bushart.
Well, tell us about what you want to do.
Yeah, so this was the, this is the old Coons RV location on, on the highway. This was an ideal location for our, my client or our business for a retail cannabis dispensary. The microbusiness licenses are just what the OCM is processing first, therefore, that's what my client has chosen to move forward with. The microbusiness would just be a retail endorsement only, there'd be no processing, manufacturing, cultivation of any kind. We have about, I think, right around a million dollars that we're investing into the property, demonstrated in the drawings included in your packet, to completely renovate the space for retail use. The owner of the business has been a cannabis, operating in the regulated cannabis space for over 10 years, started in Washington and Oregon, also owns Iowa Cannabis Company, the only medical, one of two medical cannabis companies in the state of Iowa, and is looking to add this location to the business.
So you're just representing this client?
Yeah, so, and, so, yeah, in this case, I'm also his chief operating officer, but there's, I have a consulting relationship with them as well, but, yeah.
Is your client, is he here today, or?
Mr. Kappel is not able to be here today, no.
So that's Tate Kappel, that's your?
That's right, yep.
So he actually is the owner of the business?
That's, that's correct, yep.
So you, you're not the applicant of this permit, then? It'd be Tate.
That would be Tate, yes, that's correct. I'm, yeah, I'm, I'm his chief operating officer, I've been with him for nine years, I've known him all my life, but, yeah, in terms of an individual that understands the business, Tate's business, I would, I'd be the guy to talk to, so.
So he's the one that owns Canaleed MN Minnesota LLC?
That's correct.
On Beacon, it shows the property is owned by an MN 1570, is that?
That's right.
Is that another entity of his?
It's a special, it was, the acquisition, a special acquisition, acquisition entity, so we formed that entity to acquire the real estate.
So he has that entity as well?
That's correct.
I guess I don't have a ton of questions, but traffic has become a concern.
Of course.
What, have you guys, there's this traffic study being done, or there was one issued?
Correct, I, well, I met with MNDOT last week to take a look at the site, and they've requested that the applicant complete a traffic impact study, so I did include that as a condition of your permit. They had a proposal of no left-hand turns in or out of the location, but I think ultimately that study will kind of dictate what happens there.
Shouldn't we have that before we issue an interim use permit?
I guess that's up, up to you guys.
I mean, because.
I'm not sure what the turnover time is on, on a study like that.
I mean, we can't approve an interim use permit unless we know it's, we got DOT approval.
Yeah.
Because once we do, once we do this, then it goes to the state for their final approval, correct?
Um, yeah, they'd have to have the building signed off on once the build-out's complete.
So you'd be in charge of the build-out, of as far as permitting the build-out? Is that what you're saying?
We do have a permit request in for that.
For that?
Yeah.
For the re, reconstruction, or re-overhaul, or whatever you want to?
Yeah, change of use.
Okay, change of use?
Um.
We have a, a building permit.
Yeah.
As well, for the, for the remodel, and then it's a slightly different use from the original. In terms of the traffic study, essentially, the results of the traffic study would just would require us, any remediation would be a requirement then for the property that we would, that we would be responsible for, according to MNDOT. MNDOT also, we lease to MNDOT here at this location, they share an easement, they have, I'm not sure what they do, but they have a small parcel behind that we share an easement with, so we've already had lots of conversations with MNDOT about the, the property. So, yeah, doing the traffic study, my understanding is that is a pretty lengthy process, but, you know, it would be, in the, in the context of this approval, I believe, it would mean that we would conduct the traffic study, and regardless of the outcome here, we would we would have to do those remediations that were recommended by MNDOT. They have the jurisdiction in that case, because we're on the state highway.
So how long would this MNDOT study or take? Anybody have any idea?
It's the state of Minnesota, so about your, your guess is about as good as mine, but it's probably not quick, unfortunately, but we, we would do everything. But we, we would do everything obviously in our power to do, move it along as fast as we can and ensure that we incorporate any remediation into our, into our, you know, building plan and site plan. We'd love the opportunity to get started on our construction ahead of, having that finalized. But certainly, certainly, like I said, any remediation that, that traffic study would find, we would be under the jurisdiction of Minnesota, the state of, Minnesota Department of Transportation. They would claim jurisdiction for what remediation would be required, so regardless of this outcome, we would have those requirements, I guess, is what I'm saying.
What if you put a day, or a, like prior to opening? That way they could do the buildout.
You'd sell it there then, right?
What's that?
Sell it?
Sell what?
Don't.
Sell cannabis? Yeah, absolutely, yes. That is the plan.
So how long in your estimation, if you got approval, would this take before you could operate or be ready to operate?
Yeah, I think we'd be, six months would be the most optimistic timeframe from today if, if we get going, so. At least that long. Eight months is probably a safer bet in terms of our, it's a significant remodel that we're doing of the place, obviously. It's converting a large service bay into essentially a large retail area, so there's quite a bit there that we're doing. But I'd say six to eight months before it would be operational, so certainly enough time, I think, to conduct a traffic study and implement remediations. And I'd be happy for, we'd be, we'd be happy to agree to a condition that we would not be able to open or operate before the traffic study and required remediations are done. I mean, I think, I'm almost positive that MNDOT would require that as well. If they had remediations, we couldn't operate the business until they were done.
And, yeah.
Satisfied them, yeah.
In my conversations with MNDOT, it wasn't a, a deal breaker for the project. It was just how, how can we mitigate any concerns here and what's the best option?
Well, we can't really approve this if we're going to hang our head on what MNDOT says because they can't go ahead and, and start building and we can't approve it if that's going to be the board's problem with the traffic, the MNDOT, I mean, in my opinion. I'm not suggesting that we go ahead and, and approve it and then have MNDOT.
Just approve it.
Come along later is.
Shut it down.
Well, I won't say they'll shut it down, maybe they'd.
So let me understand the process, Amelia. After it leaves here, it'll go to you for a condition, for a building permit remodel that he's applied for. And you'll wait to hear from the MNDOT study, correct? And then do you come to the county board to, for final approval?
Yes, this interim permit would go to you guys for final approval. My thought was that we would include a condition in the interim permit that this traffic impact study has to be completed and then any of the recommendations implemented. And we should add some kind of condition to that as far as prior to operation. But then that would allow them to move forward in getting some of their other items taken care of before that impact study is complete.
And I think it's important to clarify that a traffic study, a request of a traffic study from MNDOT on the property, there's no outcome where they don't allow us to open. It's just, like, they would, the remediation could be, you know, add turning lanes and put a traffic light in or something crazy like that, which I don't think we expect that.
They would just force the traffic, go to La Crescent, turn around and come back.
Uh, I'm not sure, yeah.
I don't know.
Yeah, I don't know, but it would be, it would be, it would be an infrastructure solution, not a denial.
I'm sure they're concerned about Wisconsin traffic coming over and taking, making that left turn.
I think that that's a concern as well. I think the bigger concern from their comments was the left turn back to La Crescent was the more dangerous one they were worried about, because there is a turning lane.
To get, to get across and then get over, yeah.
That's right, yeah, there is a turning lane coming from.
Yep.
La Crosse to take that left-hand turn, so they had obviously, again, MNDOT themselves is on this property, so they have obviously already opined on the situation. We've had many conversations, they're, actually have, we leased to them that property that they're using. So they have some, obviously we're going to be in large conversation with them about the infrastructure and change, but they were good with that left turn, but I think the left turn out is the concerning one, just say maybe we need to put some signage up to limit that so that you have to take a right and then U-turn to go back into La Crescent, I think was maybe a solution. Again, it could be a larger solution of additional turning lanes and traffic control systems and things like that, but that would be the outcome of the traffic, so it wouldn't be like you can't operate here, denial, that would be unprecedented.
Correct, thanks for the clarification. That's, yeah, I specifically did ask them that. Are you going to come back and say, no, they can't operate? And they said, no, it's, it's, we're not going to shut them down. It would be, how do we, how do we mitigate that? And it's the double left, the ones coming from Wisconsin and then the ones coming, are going to La Crescent, that was the concern there. So what was discussed was eliminating that.
What was the question?
Talked to the township yet?
This is in the county, Wayne.
This is in the county?
Yeah, this is in the county, yep. We have spoken with the city of La Crescent, obviously, about, it, it's, they want, they wanted to annex this, I guess, but at this time, we prefer to stay in the county.
So do you, I got another question. Does your client have, have an application in for the city of La Crescent?
He does not, no.
He does, what?
He does not. I have a client, but he does not have an application in there.
You have a different client that has an application in on the Pike?
I do, yeah. I have a lot of clients, I guess, in the state right now.
Okay. So you're not going to be operating this? It'll be your client that'll be operating this?
So in this particular one, because Tate is the COO, I'm the COO of his company directly, that I would be involved heavily in the operations of this particular location.
Okay. Well, I've been made aware of your client has been, was flagged in December by OCM for submitting two hundred and forty applications to increase his chances to get a license?
Yeah, there was, that was actually, you know, since litigated and he was found, the OCM was found to be in, incorrect in that situation. So there were applicant, so during the social equity round, there are a lot of applicants and in our case, we both are cannabis operator as well as do consulting and do application assistance for social, social equity applicants. And so that, that division of our organization had worked with and sponsored and helped assist those, those applicants, most of them were veterans, that were interested in participating in the process, but were not able to navigate the process and make sure that they had a chance to be, fill out all the paperwork correctly, make sure that their applications were in effectively to be able to be considered in the lottery. And so we assisted in, in helping them submit those applications, but those were individual applicants, like, should any of them have won, they would have won independently and it could, could have done whatever they wanted with the application, so.
It says here that in that case where you get these people to apply for social equity reasons, that if they were selected, then they would turn around and sell their business to Tate Capell for a hundred thousand dollars?
In some cases, that, that was an arrangement that, that was available to them, yes.
So that, that is a straw man argument then, throw them in.
Well, in, in the case that you don't think that the applicant makes a hundred thousand dollars in the situation, right? So if that was their, it was their choice, if they wanted to do that.
Good, nice workaround of the state system.
Well, it's not, well, because you can never still own, there are still rules about, like Tate could still not own two hundred applications, like that's, you can only own one. The rules are very clear that you can only own one license, one of each license type. Oh, and, and honest, and not.
Different names, yeah.
No, 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 under, one, no, one, one individual can only, like, you, I can't, like, create ten LLCs under my name and have ten licenses. There's something called true party of interest rules and the true party of interest is independent of the entity. And so Tate, for example, would be the true party of interest on this micro business retail license and that would prohibit him from being able to own or operate an additional retail license of any kind in, or a manufacturer or cultivation. I think the only other license he would be able to hold would be a transport license or a delivery license, and maybe just, I think just delivery, actually, if you're retail.
Sounds good to me.
Well, I have, I have concerns with it because obviously it was flagged last December. And if, you know, somebody's trying to skirt the rules early on like that.
Well, I, again, I want to point out that they had denied those applications and a judge, a judge actually agreed to put an injunction in place to stop that lottery process because the judge found that that, their reasoning and their approach was in, was invalid in that, his case as well as, I think, twelve other plaintiffs that were rejected without reason by the OCM at that time. And so, like I said, the judge opined on the situation and agreed ultimately that the OCM was incorrect in their initial assessment. Charlene Bryner was removed from the OCM as a result of her comments publicly about accusing Mrs. Orangies and Mr. Capel of anything nefarious, because that wasn't untrue.
She wasn't removed. I think she resigned, didn't she?
Yeah, I, there.
I, I'd never heard anything about that she was removed for misconduct.
There was, I think she resigned, but there was a pretty clear understanding of what, what was going on there, but, yeah. Ultimately, the comments were.
Let me understand something here. I was under, under the impression that when the state was doing this, they wanted to make sure that local people in the state of Minnesota had first dibs and keep it local in the state of Minnesota. Your client's from out of state, right? He's in Washington, Oregon, where else?
Iowa originally. He's, he's from Iowa originally.
So how can that, how can that be?
Well, I, I guess to correct that assumption.
Minnesota now?
He does live in Minnesota now. He has a residence, yeah.
Brooklyn Park?
No.
Well, I thought that was the address I saw here.
I think that might be a registered agent address that we have. But your assertion that they wanted this to be local is, is untrue. They did not provide any residency or local preference at all in the social equity round. They just chose zip codes that largely aligned with opportunity zones and things like that all over there, anywhere, so.
So this was, this site was chosen because of social, social equity?
No, I'm saying that the social equity, to qualify as a social equity applicant, what, that was who was given preference in this, not, not, not Minnesotans, but social equity applicants, and so some people qualified based on their, where they're, where they resided personally and their residence was in a certain type of what they determined to be an economically disadvantaged zone or something like that. Not sure how they could do the calculation. But for example, like, they did not provide any preference to anyone from the state of Minnesota, for example.
Okay.
It was more of the.
So.
Social equity.
Anybody from around the world could start up a business in Minnesota?
That is correct, yeah.
A micro business that sells retail.
Yeah, there was no, to my knowledge, there was no consideration in the statute or regulations for preference to local Minnesotans.
Well, that's not the way I understand it, but.
There is a building behind this area you're talking about. Is that still owned by the Fish and Wildlife?
I believe so, yes, yep.
They share the same driveway going in?
That's correct. Uh, yeah, that's, that's who we are leasing to, yeah, in that case.
They still use that for storage, don't they, or?
I believe, I believe so, yes. They have an active lease with us to continue the usage of that and their easement, of course.
But they've been contacted, they know about this.
Yeah.
Business and they have no problems with it.
That's correct, yeah. We have, have had a great correspondence with them. We're working collaboratively on traffic issues and things like that as well, so. They're, they're excited that we would be in this space to ensure that there's a, a well-capitalized, you know, operator and somebody in this space that's going to maintain it.
You were talking about remodeling too and looking at, on page one here, there is no record of septic system, there isn't, Amelia?
No, and.
Have to apply first.
Well, this, we know there is septic there. This site just, it was in La Crescent Township and sometimes we don't have full records on it. Based on the time period, it was kind of borderline, but I do, I do know that there is septic tanks, or holding tanks there. And it's not uncommon, I mean, in, in the county, there, anything prior to nineteen ninety, there's nothing. And even in the, within the nineties, there is.
When did La Crescent Township turn that over to the county, when?
Twenty nineteen.
Yeah, it was, yeah, and they didn't keep a lot of records for that. Because La Crescent Township would issue a permit on that. John, you guys would receive final records.
I believe septic was still handled by the county, but like any of the building permits were handed over when they gave up the, their zoning authority. I guess I just don't know what the communication was at that point in time between the county and, and the township.
But we don't have any, any ordinance, one way or the other, on this. Out of septic, do we, on existing building, or do we?
No, and, and so the one thing in code that when I can require septic inspections is with bedroom expansions on dwellings. In this situation, with his building permit and everything, there's really nothing. It's just outside of shoreland. It's not in floodplain. There's really nothing that gives me the authority to request that. Aside from that, I think now with this opportunity here with the interim permit, I guess that would be, that would be the time. I guess my concern is just that, I believe there's two two-thousand gallon holding tanks there, just to know that they're okay. They, we did discuss prior to them purchasing it that just due to the location, there, there's not an option for a drain field there. And they, they were okay with that, but I just want to know that the holding tanks are okay. If there is alarms and maybe get that part up to speed if there are not alarms on site, so that we can make sure that we don't have an issue there, just because I think you estimated ten employees, or I'm not sure where I get that from, but that's likely a little bit more use than what we may have seen out of the previous occupant.
Uh, probably less, because we, they're using like power washers and things like that and sprayers and they have large drainage and we're just using bathroom sink. There's no water usage for the retail space other than rest toilet flushing and hand washing. So I would actually imagine it'd be significantly less than the, the RV dealer or the service bay that was there before. So we don't have any washing or things like that.
I'm going to jump in, but I'm going to abstain from voting on this because we're talking about it. I have serviced that facility. Therefore, it could be a conflict of interest, monetary, whatever you want to say.
Because of your business?
Correct. So I'm not here to just offer information if somebody wants to ask, however, whatever. I would like to continue going there in the future too, and that's why I'm going to abstain from it, but maybe you should have said that before it started, sorry. There we go.
And that isn't a, I mean, that was a condition I was proposing. You guys don't have to go with that. Like I said, in the other avenues I have, I didn't feel that I had the authority to request that. So with, with this application, I just thought that it would be a good idea to ensure that everything is compliant there because aside from placing another holding tank in the parking lot, there, there isn't a drain field location. And as you stated, if they did, if they were annexed by the city in the future, they likely would then connect to city sewer, but we don't know that that is going to happen in the near future either.
Yeah, we'd be happy to comply with any conditions or requirements related to that. It's obviously in our best interest as well not to have any sewage containment issues on the, at the site, so. Happy to do whatever we think is necessary there.
So you stated that you're representing another client that's going to put up a similar business on the Pike?
Um, yes.
So what?
Who's that?
Why, why, what, my concern would be.
The other client?
Well, that's.
I guess it's a matter of public record, but I'd probably, out of the confidentiality of the client, probably not.
You want to tell us who it is?
No, Wayne.
We're not, Wayne, we're not talking.
That's the city of La Crescent, but what I, what I want to, what I'm worried about is density, so. So why, why the need for two so close together?
Again, this is, it's not two close together. It's two separate individuals.
But it's two identical businesses close together, right?
Well, there's a, there's actually probably more than that. There's other applicants in the city of La Crescent. There's going to be like 1,000 dispensaries in the state. So they're going to be all over the place and they'll be clustered together most likely. Is how these...
Are they all going to survive?
Absolutely not.
Who's going to, who's going to hold out in the end?
I think your trusted operators that know what they're doing. People that are well-capitalized, have been doing this for a long time, so...
Like your client?
That's right. I mean, I guess in the interest of, yeah, I think you want, if you have a cannabis operator in your community, I think you want somebody that's on the winning side of that, not the losing side. As cannabis companies fail, you can imagine their people cut corners and do things not in the best way if they're, you know, getting their bank accounts levied by the government for taxes that they owe and things like that. So you want an experienced operator doing something like this and not just a guy off the street that is trying to do it.
I'm just trying to figure out why you would be, I mean, why don't you want to focus on this site here instead of having another one just a few hundred feet away?
Again, this isn't, they're not the same people. I am consulting for many people all over the state.
So you're just going to be the consultant? You're not going to be in charge of any of the operations or...?
No, like we would not be the true party of interest because we cannot be on more than one. So the decider and the decision maker of each location needs to be a separate person and a separate entity, independent.
Well, then I'm wondering, why isn't the owner here, the guy who's going to be running it?
Mr. Capel's just out of the country at the moment.
I'd feel more comfortable if I could talk directly to the owner.
Yeah, we all would.
Okay. I'm...
Especially when he did all that stuff to get all these applications. That sounds to me like something crooked. Really does.
I judge disagreed, but yeah. I mean, again, this was all litigated.
He could explain himself, but I mean...
Look, at the end of the day, what we tried to do as an organization was, was we tried to make ourselves available to literally promote the social equity applicants that the state wanted to see participate. And the state...
But this isn't a social equity applicant, is it?
Tate is a social applicant.
He does?
Yeah, that's correct. We didn't make the criteria.
I thought you said earlier he wasn't a social equity applicant.
No, yeah, you have, he is a social equity applicant. Yeah, I've been clear about that.
Okay.
He qualified based off his residence, was in a social equity qualifying zone based off OCM criteria.
So one of his 240 applicants, this one must have got through?
No, all of those 240 applications were denied.
Were denied? So then we started over and...
And then, yeah, and along, there were over 1,000 that were denied out of 3,000 that applied. And a judge found that the OCM did not investigate, did not consider any facts. They just made up rules on the go and denied all those applications because they didn't like how they looked. And in the end, a judge agreed that they did that incorrectly. And then they had to reset the whole process and do it all over again, and the director stepped down. So there's, we were really slighted in the media for what the OCM had accused us of doing. But in the end, we were vindicated that we had not, we had not done anything wrong. And they started the whole process over and that's why this whole program has been delayed.
Maybe you think you didn't do anything wrong.
So...
Are you accusing us of doing something wrong?
No.
Well, it sure sounds like it.
So Amelia, how many days are we into this application?
We would have time to do both.
So if we tabled it a month, we still have, make the 60-day?
We'll extend it, but we have time.
Anybody that gets a whole bunch of people to get applications for licenses, he shouldn't be in the business. That's right. And if he's a millionaire, I wish he'd be broke, that he shouldn't be.
Wayne, you can't be saying that, right? I just like the applicant to be here in person.
So I want to ask a question. What are we going to gain as a board if we have the applicant here? Is he going to tell us something different than what we've heard here tonight? I'm just asking.
Well, it'd be the person who is going to be running the business, correct?
Yeah, that's what we want to see.
Like I said, I'm the chief operating officer of the business. It's literally my title to run the business. So I, there's no one that knows more about the operations of this business, this build out, this location than myself. We can delay, I guess, if that's necessary, to have Mr. Capel come and speak with you all. I agree that he will not tell you anything more. In fact, he'd probably want me to be here along with him to make sure that I answered every question with the level of detail that, you know, he would expect and like to see in the organization. I've been with this organization for almost nine years. I've seen us grow from 10 employees to all of our locations across multiple states. We are good people. We operate a good business. We've done things by the letter of the law every time. We have, we've never had a violation. We've never sold to a minor. We've never had any issues and we've served millions and millions of customers. This is, you know, the idea that somehow, you know, this is a nefarious operator of any, in any way is just unfounded. Tate is a good person and we've run a very good and successful business. You know, not everybody loves that we sell cannabis, but that's, it is what it is.
It's legal in Minnesota.
Right, and so with all of that, I mean, I think, like, we do right by our employees. We do right by our communities. We've paid hundreds of millions of dollars in taxes. That's a real statistic. Many of which in Washington goes to the local, goes to the local folks. And unfortunately here in Minnesota, they changed that and didn't. We continue to lobby all the time in St. Paul to change that back, to allocate more funds back to local communities that we operate in because that's where we believe it belongs if we're going to be taxed.
The county doesn't get any of the tax.
Unfortunately, no. And again, like we're, I was just meeting with senators and representatives and we continue to try to get them to change their mind on that issue. Because the tax dollar should stay in the communities where they're generated. And we'll continue to do that work. But yeah, in terms of, you know, as an operator, if there's any questions that you guys are interested in our practices, you know, the history of the business, how we operate, the security measures we'll take, how we approach employee compensation, how we approach everything about the business, I'm happy to answer any of those questions.
Well, if the owner, if that will make, have the board move on, we could sit here and talk all night. We haven't had public comments or nothing. If we're going to have the owner here to discuss it, then we should table it for a month. And then if that's what the board wants, because there's no use going on forward with what we're doing here unless, if that's what we want to do as a board.
Right. Well, we could continue on with public comment if anybody else has any.
Well, then you wouldn't have public comments in a month then?
It'd be all, start all over again, yeah.
Yeah, but what I'm getting at is what are we going to gain?
Oh, we don't have to table it if we don't want to.
Well, I'm not, I'm not against tabling it. I'm just saying if we're going to have the owner here, why don't we just table it? Is that an inconvenience for the public comments if we table it for a month? That'd be a good idea. I'm asking. I'm not, I'm not demanding.
I think if people made the trip up here, you could take public comment if there was any...
If there's somebody here that has a public comment, at least let them speak tonight.
It'll be on the record for the final.
Then they wouldn't have to. Would that be printed then? Would it have to be printed in our packet if we table it for a month so that they don't have to come back again? That's what I was getting at.
Yeah, we could recognize that in the packet.
And then it could be read, you could read it besides being in our packet if they didn't want to come back for public comment. I go along with that. See, we have a problem when the head man doesn't show up. Work for him, but you don't want to tell us who he is, so it's...
You're alleging I don't want to tell you who he is. Is there something you'd like to know about him that I can tell you? Because I have not at all said that I would not talk about anything or everything about this business. I understand. If the commission is more comfortable meeting Tate in person, I totally accept that. We'd probably appreciate it, yeah.
Do we have any other questions for him? Nope. Thank you.
Thank you.
Public comment? Please, you can come up and, yeah. Please say your name in the microphone.
I represent Alan's Landing and Livery directly next to them. Fish and Wildlife is between us. I'd like to bring up a few points. City of La Crescent has already approved three permits for cannabis. The only reason this organization wants this property is because they want to draw Wisconsin. There's no other reason for it. It's an outside organization. They're not connected to the state. They're not even residents of the state as far as I can tell. People in La Crescent don't even know this is happening. They didn't even know that Weber was opening the cannabis place down in the old Commodore down in, and then Flats down there. They've got one proposed on Twilight Street by Weezer's. They've got another one proposed to go into the old Bauer Building. We do not need four dispensaries in the city of La Crescent proper. Now, you also look at, I've gone through the statute 324 pretty extensively, okay? They don't want, within 500 feet of a playground or recreational area, we've got Fish and Wildlife refued right there, immediately, immediate proximity. My property's right there. We have, you know, we're over 500 feet, but we rent kayaks. We've got boat launches. They've got, you know, a fishing dock that the city of La Crescent just put in on Blue Lake that's being used. There's bike paths that goes immediately past there. La Crescent is actively promoting their bike path. There is a boat ramp right across there, right next door, right across the highway. I personally don't have a problem with the dispensary business. But that location, we don't need four of them in the city of La Crescent. You know, I understand, you know, unfortunately it was taken away from township. Township has no say in it. County, you guys are about the only, this is the only place I can stop it, right here.
It's in county districts, and it's not city. It's not township.
Right, right.
And the township gave zoning authority to the city.
Right, I understand that. I understand that.
To the counties.
Right, right.
The only way this can get stopped is through this board. Now, you know, you look at that 324 section, they talked about equity, things like that. You know, I don't, I don't know what, you know, they say that they are, meet the criteria for the, for social equity. I have no idea. You've also got, you know, within, you've got 12,500 residents. There's supposed to be only one, you know, 12,500 residents, there's only one. Houston County is only, last I knew, somewhere around 18,000 to 20,000 residents. And I think you already have a dispensary located in Houston County, don't we?
Nope.
There isn't one here yet? Okay.
Just for clarification, the county allowed four.
Okay.
But the cities can have, they're a lot manipulated and ordered, and La Crescent did that, so...
I understand that. I understand that very well. I don't understand it, but they did it.
So the, just a question for you. There's not a park around there. I mean, there's not a designated park, is there?
No, there's that boat ramp, but that is...
Boat ramp would, and I know you mentioned something about that before, Amelia, that it's not really designated as a park or anything, no.
No, but there's the bike path and there's, I mean, there's kids around there all the time now. And once again, ended, you know, a lot of the residents don't even know this is happening. I went down to Shore Acres and talked to some of the people. They're like, what? They're going to what? And, you know, they've got this, but, you know, the immediate, what it was in mile and a half radius of where this location is. So... I just wanted to come in here and say my piece.
You did.
Um, I think that the county has standing that they could deny it if they wanted to. But it's up to you. Like I said, I personally, and I would, I would recommend, I would very adamantly say that 75% of the city of La Crescent would agree with what I'm saying. They don't know what's happening. So nobody knows about this either, you know, until this came out. Even I talk to people now, they're like, they're going to what? Why? So, because they, everybody, now everybody knows about the one that they're putting in, you know, the one in Flats down in the old Commodore. They've also got one, you know, there's going to be one on Twilight Street, like I said, by Bauer's. And that's right there in proximity of where the new fishing dock is, kayak launch. So then you've got, you know, there's two of them right there. What's that going to do with traffic? I mean, and the only reason they want this in that location is to draw people from La Crosse. So...
Thank you.
Wayne? I'm back.
Say your name, please.
George Johnston, La Crescent Township. He covered most everything that I had here, but I'll tell you what. Everybody's talking about the business of selling cannabis, but nobody's ever said anything about what damage it does. Everybody's under the impression that just because the state of Minnesota legalized cannabis don't mean that it's the greatest thing on earth. The, a doctor that I listen to every once in a while, he says cannabis is a poison. He says they make cannabis in candy forms for kids. Don't we have enough problems with fentanyl, cocaine and everything else? And we should flood the whole, this whole state with another drug? Well, I guarantee you, they say that there are medicinal purposes for cannabis. That's fine. They make all kinds of pills, like I take for diabetes, for high blood pressure. But they're regulated. You only, you got to get a prescription to get them. It's fine to sell cannabis to somebody that can use it, but why should you sell it to everybody? And some of them don't know how to take it. And they will get psychotic, children especially, if they get tangled up with cannabis or marijuana. It's funny, I'm getting old, probably cantankerous, that's fine. And I don't remember everything, but it's not because I'm getting senile. It's just that the older I get, the more I have to remember. But I just, I just wanted to throw that in there just for you to understand that this cannabis thing isn't, isn't the world. It isn't, it isn't everything that everybody wants. I didn't do a poll this time. Last time I was here, it was on a different issue and I put a lot of work in it. I only heard about this a couple of days ago. And otherwise I wouldn't bother you.
Well, unfortunately, George, your comments and, and questions has all been debated over a year ago when they legalized this back in '23, I believe.
Well, I agree with you. It's legal. But I'm not saying that it's, it's right.
Right, right. But now that it's legal...
You got to go along with what the law says.
We can't have it, we can't have a dry county. We got to abide by the rules that the state sets forth.
But like he commented too, and the first thing that came to my mind, I have to go to see a doctor sometimes early in the morning and that highway is congested as hell. It's backed up clean to La Crescent. And in the afternoon and sometimes during the day. There will be a traffic problem there because there is on that one that cuts across there from Weezer Brothers across that highway and... from Weezer Brothers across that highway and all, and everything else that's there. So, it's, it's a major thing.
And that's the stuff we can look at.
Yeah, and like I say, I, somebody beat me to the punchline on them, so.
Yep.
But, but I just thought it might be some thought for whatever.
Mm-hmm.
But that's about all I got. Because it will be a hell of a draw for, for La Crosse.
Mm-hmm.
Best thing they could do is legalize it themselves, and then we can, don't have to worry about the traffic. Thank you, thank you.
Can I lay a little over La Crosse?
Not in Wisconsin, no.
Wayne, did you have a comment?
I'm Wayne Runnigan, here with a question about the highway there. Now, if they're coming out of that business, they have to take a left, or they can't take a left, right?
If they're coming out of the business, they can take a right, but if they want to get to La Crescent, they gotta go across and take a left, correct?
Right, that's kind of what MinDOT proposed.
And that's, that's the concern, I believe, the DOT has with, yep.
Well, okay, so they gotta take a right, then they gotta go into Wisconsin. In Wisconsin, it's illegal.
What?
Oh, we just, but you still can, can...
Wisconsin, what?
If they buy weed in Minnesota...
Yeah, take it to Wisconsin.
At that spot, right?
Yeah.
By the river.
Yep.
And they gotta take a right to come out of there, they gotta go into Wisconsin to turn around, right?
They don't have to, they can go across the street and take a left.
If it was proposed to be changed, it's not that way at the moment.
What Wayne is trying to get at here, I think, is that, is it legal if you live in Wisconsin, or you go into Wisconsin to take marijuana into Wisconsin from Minnesota? I think that's what he's getting at.
Is that what you're getting at?
Well, what I was getting at was, you can't, can you take a left out of that business?
Yes.
Yes, right now you can.
Yes, you can.
Okay.
Set up.
But that's what they're talking about?
Changing.
Eliminating.
With the DOT.
Yeah.
Okay, so if they did change that, they'd be forced to go into Wisconsin.
To turn around and come back into Minnesota.
Right. And Wisconsin, it's illegal.
Maybe I should be the endorsing officer.
That's, you're talking about federal law there, then, between states, so.
Okay, that's my comment.
Right, okay, thank you. Any other public comment?
So, to follow up on his, Wayne's comment, so if it's legal, and I don't know, I'm asking a question. So, it's legal in Minnesota, you can come over from Wisconsin and buy it, take it back into Wisconsin because you bought it legally in Minnesota, is that what you're saying here?
I, I don't know if that's legal or not.
Well, this is the ques, I'm not trying to...
I, I don't know.
Asking the question.
I don't know.
Because he, he brought it up, and it was a good point.
Did I ever hear a reading in the paper and so forth that says that caught with possession of marijuana in Wisconsin?
Right, they'd have to, that'd be a Wisconsin law, but...
That's supposed to all booze across the line.
Yeah, but that happens every day.
Yeah.
That'll be something I guess I'll have to look into.
Okay, need to get back to the interim part here.
Two.
Yep.
I think you need to table it.
Well, sounds like we're... Well, I, you know, I'd like to have the owner here, but I guess it's not the end of the world if he's not here, if this individual here is representing him as the CEO of his company, is that correct, CEO?
Uh, the Chief Operating Officer.
Chief Operating, C, okay.
CEO.
COO.
Questions, please.
Yeah, yeah, if there's anything I can answer for you about the, the nature of the business, the history of the business, how we conduct the business, I'm happy to do that. We'd be very happy to be able to move on with the construction on the project, if that's an outcome that's possible today. We understand that there's concerns to...
I have a question. Would you card them when they come in?
What's that?
Card them if they were...
Oh, absolutely, so, that's right, so, we do a...
That's a big difference.
Yeah, how we, yeah, how we manage that, and how we've never had a sale to a minor violation over millions of customers that we've sold, is we do intensive training with our retail associates, we have cameras that look directly overhead of the Bud Bar, just like in a casino, just over the sales counter. So, we handle all our cash handling that way, they look at the ID, our cameras are high enough resolution that they can read the date off that ID. So, we do compliance checks, so we have a team in our corporate office that randomly selects 10 transactions out of every retail associate on an ongoing basis, and audits those transactions for ID checking, cash handling practices, product handling practices, and things like that. If, you know, in the event, so our employees are always aware, you know, of the, of the potential, we do stings on our own stores to ensure that we try to come in and see if they'll, you know, so we always have somebody that's of age in our case, whereas the state will use somebody underage, but we'll use somebody of age that looks younger, that doesn't present an ID, things like that. So, we take that very, very seriously. I mean, to some of the comments here, cannabis is, is, is not good for a developing brain. And so, it's really important to us as an organization that we are good stewards of our community, and ensure that, you know, the cannabis that's, you know, we're not distributing cannabis in any way that could ever be harmful to children, at least within our control.
So, you're gonna have 24-hour security cameras on the premises?
Yeah, I'm a tech guy, so we love the camera systems that we utilize. We utilize them for compliance purposes, like I just described, is one, one thing. We manage and keep an eye on our stores from central operations center all the time to make sure that, you know, operation's going well. We have a heavy amount of cash, because it's still largely a cash-based business, and so we're very, very careful about the way that we operate. So, our security and surveillance systems are absolutely state-of-the-art, and they continuously record 24 hours a day. The state requires that, as well as 90 days of retention onsite, and we, we store quite a bit more than that onsite, and then we do off-site backup as well.
So, you're strictly cash business, aren't you?
Largely, yes. In some cases, there's PIN debit type of transactions. At some, the Shazam and, Shazam and Visa and MasterCard do not approve those in cannabis dispensaries, you'll see that a lot of times in dispensaries. We do not do that because we are under, we are, we're, even though there's providers out there that provide it, we're aware that it's against their policy, so we still do everything cash-based. We put ATMs in our facilities, we use armored car pickup, so we have a contract with Imperial here in the state of Minnesota, along with our, our banking relationships with Bridgewater Bank, to make sure that we have armored car service come and pick up the cash, and manage everything, just like you'd see. We have copied and taken a lot of our standard operating procedures from casinos, from that point of view, because we're so cash-heavy.
What are the need, you have panic buttons, what's, what's the reason for all of that?
Yeah, absolutely. So, part of our alarm system is, of course, we want to make sure that we are preventing burglary of any kind, we...
Or your employees, then they...
Yeah, so in the case that we have an armed robbery, if somebody were to come in and, you know, threaten the employee, God forbid, put a gun in their face, they have buttons that they can press right underneath their counter that are, issue a silent alarm directly to the police. We fortunately never had to use one, but it's not uncommon in the cannabis industry, mostly in metropolitan areas, that we're not super interested in operating for that reason. But, yeah, in, in that case, you know, they're positioned at every door entry, every cash register, every office, if some, if something were to happen, if the cameras, if a manager sees something on a camera that they don't see, they can hit that button, and the police are there, you know, straight away. So, that's something that we do as a part of our comprehensive security system. In this building, we're eliminating all the windows as part of the remodel, we're really turning this thing into Fort Knox, we're gonna have a, a security roll-down door that covers the entrance. So, there is just not a way to penetrate this building from the outside. This building happens to be made out of concrete, they use like prefab concrete when they built this thing, so, something we really liked about the property, so. And we do alarm systems and perimeter security and artificial intelligence detection and things like that on the outside, so if anybody was standing in the wrong location after hours for too long, we'd get notified. So, we take it very seriously, the idea that, you know, somebody might break into this facility and steal cannabis, because guess who that's gonna be? It's gonna be somebody who's underage, because cannabis, once it's legal and it's available for sale everywhere, adults aren't stealing it, right? There's better things to steal if you're trying to get something worth money. But what happens, what we see is the break-ins that we've had attempt, you know, our other facilities and things like that, they're usually high school kids, just trying to find, you know, fortunately, we've been able to, we've had many attempts, but never anyone had any success. We design our security system so nothing is impenetrable, but by the time you penetrate it, the police are gonna be there, right? So, we talk and work with local law enforcement to understand, what is your response time? What's your longest response time? And then we build our security systems to take that into account, so we make sure that however long the longest response time could be, is it's gonna take that long, even if you had a plasma cutter to cut through and get into our facility, and get where the product would be.
Yeah, it says here that you would work with Houston County Sheriff's Office for that.
That's right, yep. And so, beyond just the physical perimeter of the, of the facility, this particular build-out is included with a retrofitted vault. So, we, our product storage area, as required by Minnesota, is a specific secure storage area, and in this case, it's a vault, like a bank vault that you'd see. Not quite the big, huge door, but it does meet all the requirements of a, of a bank vault, effectively, in terms of penetration security, so.
Has the state stipulated your hours of operation?
I believe the state is very long, very broad, it's like 8:00 AM to 2:00 AM or something crazy like that. That is not, not our intention to operate those hours. I think we put in our packet 8:00 AM to 11:00 PM, but that will be dictated based, likely based on the market. None of us like to operate our businesses that long hours, but if your competitors do, then you have to, so we try to come to some arrangement with the folks in the community about like, hey, let's not all kill ourselves, trying to stay open.
I've seen traffic there, going to the doctor's office, 7:30, 8 o'clock, I've seen traffic backed way up past there to get across the bridge, Cass Street Bridge, here in rush hours. So, that's gonna be a big problem, trying to get in there.
So, do you have hours of operation in here, Amelia?
I apologize, Amelia, I, the business plan you requested got stuck in my outbox, and I sent it to you this afternoon, but...
Oh.
I saw your email to Dylan, and I was like, oh, that didn't get to you, so I apologize. That is included in information, I got to Amelia a little bit late. But, I mean, in terms of, our goal here is, you know, operate within a reasonable timeframe, it's not our desire ever to operate extremely long hours, it's expensive, and it's hard on our staff. So, it's our goal really to, you know, you gotta kind of, competition really drives it, within the context of the rules, but that's just something that we would like, we would be as conservative as, as we basically would be allowed to competitively.
Don't we have set hours in our ordinance?
We do, yes.
I know we did it for dispensaries, but...
I think we kept it pretty similar, with the exception of Sunday.
See, you gotta, you gotta give us a little break here too, in the county, because...
Totally fine.
We were under the impression that retail was gonna be happening in the dispensaries, we did not realize it was gonna be under the micro-business as well.
Yeah, it caught many of us a little bit off guard, that it was pretty, like, it was a really unclear process for everybody, it continues to be pretty opaque.
So, the state makes it up as they go?
That's what I've seen so far, yes. And, yeah, it put everybody in a really difficult spot, right? They don't give you guys a lot of guidance, they put a lot, requirements, you know, on your shoulders to try to bear. It's very, very, they've made it very, very hard on local municipalities, and then they put the icing on the cake and the cherry on top of taking away your tax money, so.
Well, I would, I would recommend in the conditions that their hours would be set at the same as a dispensary, right?
Yeah, so our hours of operation are 10:00 AM to 9:00 PM, six days a week, and then Sundays between 12:00 PM and 9:00 PM.
I'm good with that.
See, what the biggest hang-up to me on this whole thing is, I appreciate the comments about all the sales in La Crescent. To me, the biggest hang-up here is the location, like the one we just went through a month ago. It's a traffic problem, that's where I have a problem with this myself, is the, the traffic. And if we, what you said before, if we approve this and then wait for the Minnesota DOT to come up with a plan, I think we're, we're putting the cart ahead of the horse, in my opinion. Just my personal opinion. And I, I'm, I'm not against it at all, I'm thinking of the safety of the people, and, because I know what happens, I drove semi over the road back in the 60s, 500,000 miles, and we didn't have 10% of the traffic we got now, and we had goofy drivers then, but we got a lot more goofy drivers now, even before they stop at your shop, which doesn't have anything to do with my decision, because I'm not basing my decision on, on, on your business at all.
Yeah, totally understandable, and I, I guess, any remediation that comes from that study, you know, we would have to do, according to the state, we'd have to do before we are operational, and I'm happy to commit to that, if that's a condition that you'd like to provide as well, to just ensure that we don't operate without meeting those standards.
So, you, when did you submit this business plan, today, or?
Uh, yeah, it was today.
I apologize, so when I was reviewing applications, I've looked at many of the materials through the OCM website, and didn't process that I hadn't received these through our GeoPermits portal, so there's also information that's not public through the OCM, so I asked them to put it into a different document and submit it, so, I apologize, it did not get put in the board packet.
Yeah, and I, the hours of operation that you see there, I apologize, those are, we would, we would absolutely comply with the Houston County requirements there. But otherwise, essentially what the business plan is, is it's as condensed as I could make it, a version of, of, of a lot of the materials that we sent into the state related to our security operational procedures and things like that.
Well, you'd also have to get their final approval too, correct?
That's correct, yeah, so they would do a, a site inspection and complete their, their licensing process as well.
Well, I mean, I kind of agree with what Franklin said about the, it'd be nice to have that DOT traffic study done.
I guess to clarify that too, the applicant is responsible for doing the study, and then MinDOT makes a ruling based on that.
Oh, really?
Yeah, so the, these two things are, are actually completely separate, to my understanding, is the IUP process and then the MinDOT traffic study are not necessarily related, to my understanding, so...
So, it's not a factor, then?
It is not a factor. I think, a condition that, adding in the condition that we do the traffic study is totally acceptable, and it would be a requirement by MinDOT regardless, so, yeah. But it's, it would be their jurisdiction, of cour, in terms of like what remediation occurred, and, and what would be allowed, essentially.
So, if we were just to add it in the conditions, that should be sufficient, then?
What is that now?
If we added in the conditions that they need to conduct that, that'd be sufficient.
So, I do have one that says to complete a tra, it's number four, complete a traffic impact study and implement any traffic control needs as required by MinDOT, I guess I'd added that to state prior to opening, or something along those lines.
But if we approve it, then, and MinDOT comes up with a plan that is ridiculous, we've already approved it. If we're hinging on the study of, or what MinDOT comes up with, correct? We have no control once we approve it, is what it amounts to.
Right.
Yeah.
I, I guess to put it in perspective, I don't think that you have any jurisdiction over the traffic, I think it's, it's just, it would just be MinDOT, so it'd be something that we would deal with between MinDOT, but I guess there's not really a scenario, I, to my understanding, where there's jurisdiction here to, you know what I mean, other than to require us to make sure that we do it, which we're happy to do. It's absolutely our goal here to make sure that this is a safe intersection and comply with whatever requirements the MinDOT, you know, suggests that we do, and, or requires that we do, even if it's at great cost, we understand the safety aspect is paramount, so.
They, all right. They, alright, let's try to think of thought here.
Lost your computer?
Yeah, I guess I don't actually have it plugged in, so let me do it by. Just going to show you what they had sent.
We could do that.
No.
If that's what you'd like.
So, this is just what MinDOT had sent quick, quickly after the site visit, but there's a development review process, is my understanding, and they would need that traffic impact study to complete that process. Make it bigger.
You guys have any more questions, or there's been talk of tabling it, or?
Would it be wrong for the board to table it until the owner comes and answers the questions for us? We have, might have some more questions for them. This exit, you know, is a big problem out of that. We can't get ahead of ourselves if the DOT...
He doesn't approve it. Well, but they're saying they're not going to...
They're going to allow something.
They're going to allow something.
Right.
They just want to, they want to make sure that some...
Put a stop sign in there.
Well, there is a stop sign, but I mean, they're, they'll probably want to look at the left turn part.
Right, that's what I meant.
You'd easily put a stop sign in there.
But from what Amelia's told me, that that's between them and the DOT.
We have no jurisdiction over that.
That's what I was just going to say. We can't base, base our decision as a board on, on what DOT is going to do, because we don't have a say in that, the way I understand it, as a board.
You guys do have finding number nine as related to traffic, so that would be where your review of, of that process would come in.
If they put a stoplight in there, that'd piss a lot of people off.
They know we're wrong about that, for sure.
That would be the safest way to do it.
Well, that's, that's DOT thing, so I think we need to move forward.
Let's table it for a month and...
What are we going to gain by tabling it?
See what the DOT has to say about it. I'd ask for stoplights.
But we just said, we don't have any jurisdiction over the DOT, so...
Yeah, we do.
No.
No, we don't actually in this.
Nope.
They could say it stays the way it is, and that's, we have no jurisdiction, unfortunately.
I do.
And I don't know what kind of timeline it will take for them. So, I can't say a month.
That's between the applicant and the DOT.
In a, in a situation where you have a property that is, has ingress and egress onto a state highway, DOT has the jurisdiction to deter, to determine what traffic studies required and what remediation may be required by the property owner and, in the case that we're doing this change of use, for example. So, again, the enforcement of that and the findings of that would be between us and MinDOT, and are, I'm kind of irrelevant to the, I think the, the purpose of putting the condition that we make sure we do that traffic study is just to make sure we don't slide under the radar of MinDOT, right, in this context of this, but in the, whether, and in that case, we were already talking with them, but, and so, happy to have that condition on here, but again, like, there's not, regardless of their outcome, it doesn't impact one way or the other, the IUP in this case, is my understanding.
Yeah, it will. If it kills somebody, I'd rather see a set of stoplights there if somebody get killed.
We will do whatever is required, right? I mean, what, if...
If DOT says put stoplights in, you'd do it?
100%.
The DOT wouldn't have to.
Well, yeah, they would do it. The DOT would put them in.
Oh, they, oh, we'll pay for it. I guarantee they'll make us pay for it. But yeah, it's, you know, we've, we've done that kind of thing before. If it's necessary, we'll do whatever is required, you know? We want the infrastructure to make sense, and we want to comply, I mean, but whatever, yeah, if the DOT requires it, most likely, we would cover the cost of that, as well as, you know, we'd have to bond it and everything like that too, but maybe there'd be some state funds that they'd want to contribute to something like that, but I would just expect to pay for it as we do, as it goes.
Safety wise, that would be the answer, though.
It, if that, yeah, I mean, again, I, if you want to encourage the DOT to require that, or what they want to do, I don't, because I couldn't even do it if I wanted to without them, right? So, they'd have to agree to that.
Do we want to, anything else? Do we want to review the findings, or, or do we want to table it?
I make a motion we table it and see if we could talk to the owner, see if we could figure out something with the lights there. I think you're going to see people get killed there. I've slid back with trucks with motorcycles there. That's the whole thing. You don't want anybody to get killed.
Do we have a second to table it for a month?
I'll second it.
Home favor?
Better have a roll call vote.
Okay. And again, I'm not voting, because I've worked for previous owners of the facility and potentially others.
Sorry, that was Larry then.
You might have to vote, because you'll be the, could be the deciding factor when we got five of us.
You told me I couldn't.
No, I said you, you're the chairman. You vote when you have odd numbers to break the tie.
So, oh, sorry.
I'm sorry, go ahead.
Say, motion to table to look into the safety concerns? Is that what you said?
You got to.
Is there a specific finding, or is there a specific action that you would like us to take?
Right on that road, I slid behind a, a big truck with a motorcycle. As he pulled out in front of me, didn't see me. So, that, that tells you right there, if it could kill me, it could kill anybody.
Totally understand. And my, my question is, if there's a specific, when you, when you were requesting additional information related to safety, is there a specific action you're looking for from?
I'd like to see the DOT put a stop signs on. I would, really.
I guess I, I think that's a fairly simple item that if they, I mean, we have to go through the traffic study.
They can say no, and then it's up to the DOT. When somebody gets killed, you can sue them.
So, your motion is strictly on the fact that you wanted for safety?
For safety.
The DOT?
Yep, that's a, I'll make that motion.
I guess I just want, I'll add that I don't know when we'll get an answer from the DOT, and we do have an obligation to give them an answer within a certain period of time. So, we can only table it so much.
60 days, so we can only do it a month. So, it would be, we meet here a month again in a month, and the DOT still hasn't responded. We're not going to have any answers, so.
Like, the traffic study won't, the, the traffic impact study will not be complete in 30 days.
Nope.
That's, we've, we've been down this road a few times, but the, I think what, the way that they've opined in terms of what they provided, Amelia, in terms of the, what they think that may be the recommendations, I think is probably as much as you're going to get from them before they do a traffic study, is my thought, but...
I think we go to Rochester and get an answer in a week.
If you can do that, that'd be...
I can do it.
That'd be something.
Well, call, call the question.
You're waiting on me for a call, huh? Franklin Hahn?
No.
Wayne Feldmeyer?
No.
Larry Gauston?
No, this is for tabling it?
It was a motion to table.
I make, should we table it for a month? I say yes for tabling it for a month.
Well, maybe they didn't understand what we're voting on here, but what we're voting on, correct me if I'm wrong, the motion on the floor is that we table it for a month. So, if you're in favor of the motion, you vote yes. If you're against the motion, you vote no. I voted no. I don't know if they understood it or not over there.
Wayne?
Yes.
Larry?
Yes.
And Eric?
No, because it's based on the DOT, and we have no say in that, so.
So, motion failed. Do an alternative motion.
So, I...
I'm stepping in on yours.
I guess, well, it's conflict of interest, or...
Right. You can still conduct the meeting, Chase, so. I've never been here before. You've been here several times.
Well, yeah.
So, now we just move on.
Because it's a failed...
Yep.
Yeah, so we review the findings. Correct?
Yes, so, finding number one, that the proposed use conforms with the county land use plan. Analysis states that the land use plan has multiple goals and policies in regard to diversifying and promoting economic development, which I'll support this proposal. Wayne Feldmeyer?
No.
If you guys could provide explanations as well, I guess I'd appreciate it.
Because it's not safe.
Larry Gauston?
No, same reason.
Franklin Hahn?
Okay, run this by me again, so we make sure we know what we're voting for. Maybe it's just me that...
You're voting that yes or no that the proposed use conforms with the county land use plan?
So, I vote yes.
Eric?
Yes, because it complies with their intent of highway business zoning district.
Number two, that the applicant demonstrates a need for the proposed use. Analysis states that the applicant has received pre-approval from OCM and now needs to secure local government approval before completing the licensure process with the state. Larry?
Yes.
Franklin?
Yes.
Eric?
No.
With a, with a question, I think this is, or a comment, I think this here is in every one of our staff analysis, because it's a need for the proposed use. I think in all of our staff analysis and our findings, that's always in there, isn't it? Isn't that a kind of a common language in your, no matter what? Is it proposed need for it?
Well...
The applicant's generally not going to come in if they don't think they have a need for it.
If I, I'll explain my reason for no, is that I don't feel that there's a need.
Oh, that's, okay.
Because there's already three in La Crescent, the city of La Crescent, so, in which the applicant is involved in one of those, so.
No, it's because of the traffic. Someone will get killed there.
I don't know if we're going to accomplish anything here today, also because we don't have, because we don't have the ability to get a, I mean, we already have two now that have failed. I mean, we can keep going, but I guess I'm curious on your guys' opinions.
Well, if it's going, if it's going to fail in the end here, because of, two have already failed, so.
It's a safety factor.
Okay, keep going. That the proposed use will not degrade the water quality of the county. Staff analysis is that this site is strictly for indoor retail use and will not differ greatly from the previous operation, so should have no impact on water quality. Franklin?
Yes, I agree.
Eric?
Yes.
Wayne?
Yes.
And Larry?
Yes.
Four, that the proposed use will not adversely increase the quantity of water runoff. Analysis states that this proposed use is strictly retail, and there will be no increase in impervious surfaces or change to the exterior of the structure that would increase quantity of water runoff. Wayne?
Yes.
Larry?
Yes.
Franklin?
I agree, yes.
Eric?
I agree.
Five, that soil conditions are adequate to accommodate the proposed use. I guess this is not applicable. Wayne?
Yes.
Larry?
Yes.
Franklin?
Yes.
And Eric?
Yes.
Six, that potential pollution hazards have been addressed and that hazards have been met. Analysis states that appropriate disposal of solid waste and management of septicage will mitigate pollution concerns, and operating permit will be required for the holding tanks, and the landowner is encouraged to install automated alarms if not already equipped. Larry?
Yes.
Franklin?
Yes.
Eric?
Well, I haven't seen those plans, but I'll take your word for it, yes.
Yes.
Seven, that adequate utilities, access roads, drainage, and other necessary facilities have been or are being provided. Analysis is that this is an existing facility, and all utilities and access roads are present. Franklin?
Yes.
Eric?
Yes.
Wayne?
Yes.
Larry?
Yes.
Eight, that adequate measures have been or will be taken to provide sufficient off-street parking and loading space to serve the proposed use. Analysis states that the application identifies there currently approximately 130 parking stalls, which exceeds the county requirement. Franklin?
Yes.
Eric?
Yes.
Wayne?
Yes.
And Larry?
Yes.
Nine, that facilities are provided to eliminate any traffic congestion or traffic hazard which may result from the proposed use. Analysis states that MinDOT has been consulted and requested the applicant complete a di, a traffic impact study to determine the safest method to eliminate congestion or hazards as a result of heavy use. It's anticipated there will be heavy traffic from Wisconsin requiring a left-hand turn to the site, and the concern is that coupled with left-hand turns back towards La Crescent could create a hazard. Eric?
You're saying it will not be injurious?
I guess I'm saying that the condition...
We're on number nine, right?
Yes. The conditions would mitigate the concerns with traffic, the condition of the traffic impact study.
Yes.
Okay, repeat that again, please.
Let's, you want me to read the analysis?
Yeah.
MinDOT has been consulted and requested the applicant complete a traffic impact study to determine the safest, safest method to eliminate congestion or hazards as a result of heavy use. It's anticipated there will be heavy traffic from Wisconsin requiring a left-hand turn to the site, and the concern is that, is that coupled with the turn, left-hand turns back towards La Crescent could create a hazard.
Yes.
Yes.
And Franklin?
Yes.
Ten, that the conditional use will not be injurious to the use and enjoyment of other property in the immediate vicinity for purposes already permitted. Analysis states that the existing use was, was retail, similar to this proposal, however, this proposal will likely see more traffic. While there is some residential property in the vicinity, this location is separated from all neighbors, and US 1461 is a four-lane road that creates a natural barrier, and the Mississippi River bottoms provides the same protection in other directions. Wayne?
Yes.
Larry?
Yes.
Franklin?
Yes.
And Eric?
Yes.
Eleven, that the establishment of the conditional use will not impede the normal and orderly development and improvement of surrounding vacant property for predominant uses in the area. Analysis states that there are likely no development opportunities on surrounding vacant property due to natural limitations, so this proposal will have no impact in that respect. Larry?
Yes, yes. Yes, yes.
Franklin?
No, the reason is because I'm, I'm thinking maybe it could lower the value of those houses because of the, the selling of the cannabis stuff.
Eric?
No, I think it would, uh, decrease the value of the neighboring properties.
And Wayne?
No, increases the value.
Uh, twelve, that adequate measures have been or will be taken to prevent or control offensive odor, fumes, dust, noise and vibration, so that none of these will constitute a nuisance, and to control lighted signs and other lights in such a manner that no disturbance to neighboring properties will result. Analysis states that this type of operation will not have fumes, dust, noise and vibrations, and since this is retail only, there should be no odor. State and local standards closely regulate signs for cannabis businesses, and those standards are more restrictive than what is present from the pre- uh, from the previous operation. Meaning that there is actually a bill, or more of a billboard-type sign out front, but that they would, that would have to be removed, because they can't use this for, that for that, for this facility. Um, Wayne?
Yes.
Larry?
Yes.
Franklin?
Yes.
And Eric?
Yes.
Thirteen, that the density of any proposed residential development is not greater than the density of the surrounding neighborhood, or not greater than the density indicated by the applicable zoning district, and this was not applicable. Wayne?
Yes, so if it's not applicable, why are we voting on it?
Well, we normally just rule them all out at the beginning, but we forgot to do that, so we'll just vote on them here. Wayne, Larry? Or Wayne, sorry, Larry?
Yes.
Franklin?
Yes.
And Eric?
Yes.
We typically will make, somebody will make that motion before we get started, and we forgot that today. Um, fourteen, that the intensity of any proposed commercial or industrial development is not greater than the intensity of the surrounding uses, or not greater than the intensity characteristic of the applicable zoning district. Um, analysis states that this location is adjacent to both the city of La Crescent and La Crosse, and a retail operation of this type will be very similar to commercial development in both of those communities. More specifically, there will be two similar cannabis businesses within a mile and a half of the site. Franklin?
Yes.
Eric?
No.
Wayne?
No.
And Larry?
No.
Can one of you guys provide it, an explanation?
Well, no, because there's going to be many.
Because there will be too many?
There will, there will be other businesses in the close proximity in the city of La Crescent that are permitted.
Yeah, but what it's, go ahead. What it says, though, is that there will be two similar cannabis businesses within a mile and a half of the site. That's why I agreed with the analysis, but go ahead, go ahead, go on to the next one.
Uh, so fifteen, that site-specific conditions and such other conditions are established as required for the protection of the public's health, safety, morals and general welfare. In order, uh, analysis states that in order to operate, the applicants will have to receive final approval from the Office of Cannabis Management, and that approval will confirm they have met all state requirements intended to mitigate concerns related to public health, safety and morals and general welfare. Uh, Eric?
Yes.
Wayne?
Yes.
Larry?
Yes.
And Franklin?
Yes.
That concludes the findings then.
Well, we had more than one fail, but-
Is there, well, is there a motion to adopt them? And then we'll-
There a motion to adopt them?
Uh, I think, maybe I could be wrong, but I think the right terminology is to approve the findings. Am I wrong? Because that's what we did was we-
Accept, sorry, accept.
Is that a motion, Franklin?
Yes, I'll make it.
I'll second that.
Uh, Wayne?
Aye.
Larry?
Yep.
Franklin?
Yes.
And Eric?
Aye.
So we had motion, uh, or finding one was two-two, finding two was two-two. Finding eleven was one-three. Failed, and finding fourteen was one-three.
Those are all fails.
Those are fails.
Yeah.
You want me to give me a little bit of power, because I'm going to go up and see MINDOT on this.
Well, we got to get us through this part first.
Okay.
So-
So if more than one fails, it's denial?
It's denied.
So you need to make, yeah, make a motion for that?
We need a motion to deny.
Well, I thought we did that when we were ready voted two-to-two, and it was a tie, so it was automatic failure because of a tie vote. Before we ever went to the findings.
That was a motion to table.
That was to table, that was a motion to table.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
So the motion on the floor would be-
To deny.
Well, the motion's written to recommend, so you wanted, due to deny, recommend denial to the Houston County Board, um, an interim use permit to operate a cannabis microbusiness in the Highway Business District with five conditions.
Why don't you put it in there unless they put stoplights in?
No.
Wayne, that's-
You can do that.
No, we have no jurisdiction over the DOT.
Have it. They want turkeys down here, we got jurisdiction.
You can't do that.
So I have, just to make sure I have this right. Uh, motion to recommend to the Houston County Board denial of an interim use permit to operate a cannabis microbusiness in the Highway Business District.
I'll make that motion.
Conditions don't-
I'll make that motion.
Oh, why don't you add it unless there's stoplights there?
No. I didn't make that motion. I make a motion to denial. Recommend denial to the, to the county board.
We have a second?
Okay.
Oh, second.
Roll call that?
Yeah.
Wayne? If you could provide an explanation, please?
Well, you put a stoplight there, that can safely go in and out. Okay, and the stoplight can be one of those timer ones, when there's a lot of traffic, the stoplight will make you wait.
Is that yes or no?
No.
Okay. Larry?
This is for denial.
For denial?
I deny.
So yes?
Yes.
Can you just provide a quick explanation?
Because of so many businesses in the area and the traffic.
Franklin?
Yes, and of course, it's self-explanatory, we just went through the findings, and it tells you right there.
And Eric?
Um, yes, um, same thing. My findings that I voted against explains my reasons.
Okay, so I have three to one.
But this, for your information, this goes, correct me if I'm wrong, but this goes to the commissioners, correct?
Yes, it'll go to the commissioners on September sixteenth.
It's not the final.
So the commissioners might overrule this board? I just wanted to put that out to you.
Understood, thanks.
Thank you.
Hey.
Thank you.
Thank you.
It's been a hell of a night.
It ain't over.
It ain't over yet.
It don't need to be, I don't know.
Last but not least.
All right, so uh, please take notice that an application has been made by Chase Johnson, 9018, State 76 in Caledonia, for an interim use permit to operate a cannabis microbusiness in the Egg Protection District, and, uh, or in Sheldon Township on the following premises, at Section 20, Township 103, Range 6, and its parcel ID 120156000. Said applicant standing and making application is as the owner of said described lands. A hearing on this application will be held at the Houston County Commissioners' Room, City of Caledonia, at 6:20 PM on Thursday, August 28th of 2025. All persons having an interest in the matter may attend the hearing or submit comments relative to the granting or denying of said application. Comments should be mailed to the Environmental Services Department at 304 South Marshall Street, or emailed to the zoning office, and must be received by Tuesday, August 19th of 2025, to be included for review prior to the hearing. All comments are considered public record, and it was advertised on August 13th of 2025. So this is a similar proposal to what we saw last month. Um, they will only be doing cannabis cultivation. This, oh, um, they can come up and, I guess, explain, but it, it was an existing site used for hemp, and so he will be, um, transitioning into cannabis, uh, and the location is off State 76, but ki- kind of set back off the highway.
Say your name in the microphone, please, and-
Good evening, my name's Chase Johnson. Thought we haven't talked about cannabis enough tonight, so I thought I'd give it another roll. Um, a few remarks, just good evening, members of the Planning Commission, thank you for the opportunity to speak with you this evening. My name is Chase Johnson, I am here representing Wild Hog, which is our family-owned agricultural business based in Houston. For the past seven years, we have been operating as a state-licensed hemp cultivator in full compliance with state and federal regulations. Over those years, we've built, excuse me, built a reputation for integrity, responsibility and respect, not only for the land that we work, but also for our neighbors and this community as a whole. Our, our operation has never received a single complaint, and I take great pride in the strong relationships that we've maintained locally with both residents and officials. Today, we are working towards approval of an interim use permit that will allow us to transition into a licensed cannabis cultivator. This is a natural next step in the progression of our business, as one that we approach with the same level of care, compliance and transparency as our work has defined so far. We remain committed to being good neighbors and good stewards of our land. Our facility will continue to operate discreetly, securely, and well within regulatory guidelines. We are not newcomers to this space, and we have pro- we have a proven record and a deep investment in this community's well-being, as this is also our home. I welcome any questions that you may have, and I appreciate your consideration for our request this evening.
Are you planning on growing outside, or greenhouse, or both?
Outside.
Outside.
We have been growing outside for seven years.
Okay.
It isn't a little late to plant it?
Well, currently it is, yes. This, this, this will be a next-year crop.
Okay.
Yep, we currently have a hemp crop going right now.
Yeah. So that's, that's a state-licensed deal, or not a federal?
We do report to the USDA.
Okay, that's a USDA program, kind of?
Uh, well, it's a state license, but we go through the USDA, all of our acres are reported to the, to the USDA, and that is a requirement by the state.
Okay.
Yep.
Is it one crop a year?
It is one crop a year, yep.
But the plants get pretty big.
Well, that all depends.
So it's going to be planted in the green area of the map here, is that?
Yes.
Yep.
That's where our hemp crop has been, we've rotated a little bit in the last few years. As you all know, rotation is fairly important.
Mm-hmm.
Um, so we do rotate some, the cannabis crop will be a little different, because uh, we have to tell the state exactly where it's going to be, and it is quite complicated and, uh, arduous to move it, once we do it, so.
Do you cultivate it?
Do we cultivate it? Yes.
With cultivators?
We have.
Really?
Yep. First of all, I, I've been a home builder for 30 years in the cities, I was born in the wrong place. I have always wanted to be a farmer, I have always wanted to have a farm. I've had this farm for 18 years, but it's never been big enough for me to be a crop farmer. It is big enough for me to be this kind of a crop farmer. It is a cash crop, it's just a different cash crop. It's kind of no different than barley and hops to beer. It just has a different stigma to it.
Fertilize the land, too, then, for that?
Mm-hmm, yeah, we do. I, I brought, just to show you, some products that we make. This is not flour, this is simply some products. So our hemp business is called Hog Hill, because it's, the ridge that our farm is on is the hog ridge. I say it differently than the way it was supposed to be pronounced, but that, but that's it. But one of our biggest products, and I'm happy to show this all to you, but it's a balm, it's a pain balm, and it comes directly from our plants. We harvest our plants, excuse me?
Comes from the hemp or the marijuana?
Well, it comes from hemp, but the same product, a marijuana plant can also do this, and it adds a little different, um, medicinal properties to it. So I encourage people to try it, I, I'm happy that you can smell it, look it, run your finger across it, but this is a very popular product of ours, and we sell a ton of it, and we sell it to people in our communities. People that you know use our product. And then the other, another product that we have is a pet tincture, this is for pets. We developed this when we had a 14-year-old black lab. She lived to be 16, and I swear that she made it the extra two years because of this product. There is no THC in this product, but what it did is it helped with her joints, it helped with her ability to be calm, and it just, it gave her more vibrance in life. So can the marijuana or cannabis plant do some things that are detrimental? Absolutely it can, so can alcohol. So, but it also has a lot of really, really cool benefits, that people can get relief from, not just a high. There is, because this product for the pets has zero THC in it, zero. So it's, I just want everybody to have an open mind to what some of these products can do for people, not just the negative side. You know, because a cannabis plant will still make these products, because the state won't allow me to make both hemp products and cannabis products.
What does the seed cost you?
Well, it all depends on how much I buy. But a seed is anywhere from five to $10 for one seed.
So you're going to grow the hemp besides the-
I won't be able to.
So you'll just have the half-acre cannabis grow?
Correct.
Okay.
But keep in mind, you won't know the difference, if you come out and look at my field this year and you come out next year, they look the same, they smell the same, the only way you can ever tell the difference is with a chemical test.
I always heard that marijuana plants got great big.
Can, I have hemp plants that are over eight feet tall sometimes. So, you know, it's possible, it all depends on the strain, if it's a sativa or an indica, and it also depends a lot on luck. This year wasn't a great year, as you all know, we got plenty of rain, and it did not help the crop. You know, the crop's average, it's not fantastic.
So do you process these on your farm, then?
Well, we do, yes, we harvest them, we take them into our shed, which is in your paperwork, that's where everything is dried, and then it gets processed down, depending on where it's going, whether it's going to be sold for biomass, which then gets shipped off to a manufacturer, we don't do any of that at our facility. Or we process any flowers or balms and that kind of stuff, we will continue to do at our facility, but everything else gets shipped out.
Is it like working with tobacco?
I would imagine, I guess I never worked with tobacco, but it's the same idea, how you, you harvest and then you hang the plant and dry it, yeah, mm-hmm.
Can you point out, actually, where you'll be growing it? I guess that was one thing I'm, I'm-
Um, I-
It's in this page, I think.
Page, Amelia? In our packet here, there's a green strip there, it's, was outlined.
So it is just this?
Uh, yeah.
Kind of drainage way there?
Correct.
Right, in there?
It's on the upper edge of that, and it will probably go into the other strip just a little bit.
It's in his application.
Yep.
So for security measures, you stayed in your- So for security measures, you stayed in your, your business plan here. Alarm systems and coded access control systems?
Correct. State requirements.
Okay. So you have a gate that you have to?
Well, we have a gate at the end of our driveway. Our driveway is three-quarters of a mile long, and so it's, you cannot see the field from the highway. Uh, you can't see the shed barely from the highway. Um, so yeah, you, you go through the gate, and then all of the access points into the shed will have the security measures, the video, everything that's required by the state.
That's a lot of work.
It is a lot of work.
And, and the field itself won't be fenced in or?
I would love to tell you it wouldn't be fenced in because I think it's going to look awful, but the state says it has to be fenced in. So I would love to tell you that it's not gonna be, but I don't, I don't believe the state's gonna allow that to happen, so yeah, it'll be.
Require you to fence that in?
It'll be fenced.
Well, we just had one in, we had, we're probably getting the cart ahead of the horse here, but we just had one where we made him put in an eight-foot chain link fence, and so I, I guess, I'm not trying to be mean or nothing, but we got hard to jump from one to the other and for different applicants.
You're sounding normal.
Thank you. You know, I guess I understand, I understand your point, but I'm not literally feet off of the highway. I'm three-quarters of a mile off the highway. And so you have to go through my neighbor's yard or down my driveway in order to get to the field. And in the seven years that we've done this, we've had zero problem. You know, the biggest thief I have to worry about has eight or 10 points on his head in the fall.
And they're pretty bad.
Surprisingly, they leave the plants alone.
They do?
They walk right through them.
Yeah, they're kind of like the smell, I suppose.
Probably.
So do you, do you live on this?
We do.
For 365?
Uh, not, well, we have a place up north, so we leave a few days in the summertime, but otherwise, yeah, 360, you know, so 360.
This is your residential?
This is our home, yes.
I think we should go to the findings effect here.
What does, what does the state require for a fence?
Six feet is what the state requires with a gate.
Of any make or?
Uh, no, they just say a commercial-grade fence. It can't be an agricultural fence, which will be a chain link fence. Not necessarily barbed wire, but it will be chain link. And, you know, it's, I think it'll look awful, but I, you know, it is what it is.
So when you say chain link, is that kind of like our netting fence? Is that what a chain link is? A small, they're diagonal or? Is that?
Personal, chain link fence.
Yeah, okay, just.
Doesn't keep the deer out, though, does it?
No, probably if they want in, they'll get in.
So the state says six feet?
The state says six feet.
The only comment that was submitted was about your, you have an easement through?
Just the, part of the driveway.
They have an easement through your property.
Correct.
Correct?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. And this won't affect your?
Absolutely not. There will be zero additional traffic to what's already there.
So like, the only traffic will be is when trucks come in to take the product away?
Correct.
And those are?
It's only in the?
Those are licensed vehicles as well that have to be, they're licensed transporters?
Correct.
You're still gonna make those products from?
Yes. That is our intention. Would you guys like to see them?
Yeah. You, I'm good. I could smell it from here.
No, you can't.
I thought I smelled something when you opened that jar.
It smells like eucalyptus.
I could smell that, yeah.
All right.
No, that's good.
Now that jar, that's FDA-approved then or?
No, I can't make any FDA claims at all. It says right on here that this is not an FDA-approved product, that we are not claiming anything from it because that's, that's the law. We, we have to state that because the FDA has not weighed in on hemp or cannabis in any way, shape, or form. So we have to put that disclaimer directly on the label.
I know you see it advertised on TV for arthritis, different things, but some people react differently to it.
That's an excellent point. You're right. Everyone has an endocannabinoid system in their body, so everyone's system reacts differently. So some people might get relief from a certain product, some people might not. So gummies affect people a certain way, but not everyone responds the same. So you have to, just because it worked for your significant other doesn't mean it's gonna work for you, but it could be vice versa as well.
What do township officers think about this?
Well, I guess you'd have to ask Wayne, but I did meet with him a couple of weeks ago.
What do you think?
So if there's no more questions for him, we could have other comments?
Wait for public until we're, do you have one for Chase?
Um, so, so this that you're gonna grow now, I don't understand this business that much, but don't you sell the buds, what they call buds, from your plant?
Can, that's an option. We also take them and grind them up and make this, the balm with it.
Okay, so you're not gonna sell the buds and you're going to?
Not necessarily. We, that, that still has to be a market that we allow ourselves to sell to.
Okay, so you have that option?
Correct.
Okay, all right, that's, that's, that was my question.
Anything else? Sure?
Thank you. Now we'll go to public comments.
Wayne Runnigan, Sheldon Township Supervisor. We talked to Chase. He came to our meeting. I told him 6 o'clock, he must have been there at quarter to 6:00, so he's responsible. I, I have nothing bad to say about it. If, if there's gonna be a grower in our township, you're the guy.
Perfect.
And that's the way the laws are, so what can I say? I won't say what my opinion is about it.
That doesn't do any good, so, right.
Right.
We're not bolting on that.
So I won't waste your time. I'll just give him a thumbs up.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you, Wayne.
Thank you, Wayne.
Any other public comment? Well, I think we.
Go to the findings.
All right. You guys, we have 5, 9, 13, and 14 that are not applicable. Anybody?
McWhore, should we strike those from the findings?
Second.
5, 9, 13?
All in favor?
Aye.
So number one, that the proposed use conforms with the county land use plan. Analysis states that the goals of the land use plan balance economic development and agriculture. This particular proposal will retain the agricultural use of the property and also promote diversified economic development as encouraged in the plan. Wayne?
Yes.
Larry?
Yes.
Franklin?
Yes.
And Eric?
Yes.
And Chase?
Yes.
Uh, number two, that the applicant demonstrates a need for the proposed use. Staff analysis states that the applicant has received preliminary approval from OCM and now needs to secure local government approval before he can proceed with OCM. Larry?
Yes.
Franklin?
Yes.
Eric?
Yes.
Chase?
Yes.
And Wayne?
Yes.
Number three, that the proposed use will not degrade the water quality of the county. Analysis states that the wastewater should not be minimal since, should be minimal since it will rely on natural precipitation and minimal waters used for processing. Franklin?
Yes.
Eric?
Yes.
Chase?
Yes.
Wayne?
Yes.
And Larry?
Yes.
Four, that the proposed use will not adversely increase the quantity of water runoff. Analysis states that this proposal will not alter the existing site conditions and should result in no change to the quantity of water runoff. Eric?
Yes.
Chase?
Yes.
Wayne?
Yes.
Larry?
Yes.
And Franklin?
Yes.
Five is not applicable, so six, that potential pollution hazards have been addressed and that standards have been met. Analysis states that the operation will be organic in nature. Solid waste will be disposed of following local regulations, and green waste will be mulched or rendered unusable in a manner to meet the state regulations. There will be no wastewater from the processing and packaging component of the operation, and any future septic system will need to meet MPCA standards. Chase?
Yes.
Wayne?
Yes.
Larry?
Yes.
Franklin?
Yes.
And Eric?
Yes.
Seven, that adequate utilities, access roads, drainage, and other necessary facilities have been or are being provided. Analysis states that all utilities, access roads, and facilities are existing. Wayne?
Yes.
Larry?
Yes.
Franklin?
Yes.
Eric?
Yes.
And Chase?
Yes.
Eight, that adequate measures have been or will be taken to provide sufficient off-street parking and loading space to serve the proposed use. Analysis states that the applicant identifies he will be the only employee in since this is his home as while there is sufficient parking on-site. Larry?
Yes.
Franklin?
Yes.
Eric?
Yes.
Chase?
Yes.
And Wayne?
Yes.
Nine is not applicable, so 10, that the conditional use will not be injurious to the use and enjoyment of other property in the immediate vicinity for the purposes already permitted. Analysis states that since this facility has been raising hemp since 2019, this change of use will only alter the operation in terms of crop, so should not be injurious to property, properties in the immediate vicinity. Franklin?
Yes.
Eric?
Yes.
Chase?
Yes.
Wayne?
Yes.
And Larry?
Yes.
11, that the establishment of the conditional use will not impede the normal and orderly development and improvement of surrounding vacant property for predominant uses in the area. Analysis states that the predominant use in the area is agricultural, and this use is consistent with those operations, nor will it impede other development. Eric?
Yes.
Chase?
Yes.
Wayne?
Yes.
Larry?
Yes.
And Franklin?
Yes.
12, that adequate measures have been or will be taken to prevent or control offensive odor, fumes, dust, noise, and vibrations so that none of these will constitute a nuisance, and to control lighted signs and other lights in such a manner that no disturbance to neighboring properties will result. Analysis states that the primary concern for this proposal is odor, and the applicant states the prevailing wind will take odor away from neighbors. Chase?
Yes.
Wayne?
Yes.
Larry?
Yes.
Franklin?
Explain this here, how the wind will take the odor away from the neighbors.
The prevailing wind typically sucks it up into the valley, not down towards.
Oh, 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 normally the winds go up?
In the, the valleys are, and the winds come through, it sucks most of the scent up into our valley.
Okay, all right, yes.
Kind of a bowl up in there, isn't it?
I said yes.
Eric?
Yes.
13, not applicable, 14, not applicable, and 15, that site-specific conditions and such other conditions are established as required for the protection of the public's health, safety, morals, and general welfare. Analysis states that in order to operate, the applicant will have to receive final approval from the Office of Cannabis Management, and that approval will confirm they have met all state requirements intended to mitigate concerns related to public health, safety, morals, and general welfare. Wayne?
Yes.
Larry?
Yes.
Franklin?
Yes.
Eric?
Yes.
And Chase?
Yes.
I make a motion that we approve the findings.
Second it.
We roll call that or all in favor?
All in favor.
I can, uh?
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carried.
So I had no additional conditions aside from the two that are standard, so the motion would be to recommend to the Houston County Board approve an interim use permit to operate a cannabis microbusiness in the Agricultural Protection District with two conditions in Sheldon Township. One, that the permit shall comply with all federal, state, and local laws and regulations, and two, that the county may enter onto the premises at reasonable times and in a reasonable manner to ensure the permit holder is in compliance with the conditions and all other applicable statutes, rules, and ordinances. Does it have anything else to add?
Everything, what do you want to add?
I, I would make that a motion, but I would include the motion of an eight-foot chain link fence.
Condition, you mean?
Right.
A condition?
Yep. He, the state requires six right now.
Yep.
Maybe that'll keep the deer out, too.
So just eight-foot chain link, um, no barbed wire?
I don't, I don't think that the, up in there with the gate across, he's gonna have that much problem with people crawling over it and theft, I don't think. Unless you think we should use everybody the same or use the other ones with the wire, I mean with the, with the bar, angled with the barbed wire, I'm.
And we made that one eight feet too, correct?
Why don't we make a motion to let him put barbed wire on top of the chain link fence he's got? That way it'd be a lot less work.
Well, if we're gonna be, in my opinion, we're gonna be fair, and I didn't make the motion with the barbed wire on top, I made the motion with an eight-foot chain link fence. So now it'll, either it gets disapproved or whatever. Maybe you won't even get a second on it, I don't know.
Do we have a second for an eight-foot fence?
Well, you gotta take the whole motion into, in fact, not just the, I made the motion, as Amelia read it, with the exception was to add an eight-foot chain link fence. That's the motion on the floor.
So here's what we had last time, and I'll take out. Perimeter fence around the grow area shall be eight feet high and contain gate locks.
I'm not trying to pick on you, I just.
He's gonna have a lock already, a gate, right?
At the main?
Yep.
So just perimeter fence around the grow area shall be eight feet high?
Instead of, instead of six feet, what the state requires?
Yep, state requires six feet.
The other property that you ruled that on was visible to highway, and ours is not.
I don't like the fence.
Comment was already about how expensive the fence will be. Farmers are hard enough to handle these things.
Main thing is you want to keep the deer out.
Deer can have it because they won't touch it.
It's not, yeah, it's not an attractant for the deer. The six-foot required fence by the state is required by law.
Correct.
Well, Franklin made the motion for, for eight. Eight. And the, and the other two conditions? And the other two conditions.
Do we have a second for that?
The other two conditions?
No.
Follow state, federal, and?
Local laws.
Laws.
And county may. County may enter the premises.
County may enter the enterprise at any reasonable?
Reasonable time.
Lot better deal than the last one we had.
One more time. Do we want a second for the addition of eight or not?
I would second it. Eight-foot fence.
Very seconded. Now we roll call?
Yep. Wayne Feldmayer?
No.
Larry Ghosted?
Yes.
Franklin?
Yes.
Eric?
I'll vote yes. I don't, you know, I don't agree with it, but I'll vote yes.
With the fence or the?
I'll agree with the motion to approve with the three conditions, the eight-foot fence.
Uh, and Chase?
No.
So it's three to two?
Three to two.
So they will, this application and with those conditions will be presented to the Board of Commissioners on September 15th.
Is there anything else, or do we motion to adjourn?
Uh, I do have a question. I don't know if you guys were around for the Board of Adjustment, but the Township Officers' Meeting was scheduled for Thursday, the 25th, which would be our public hearing meeting. So we were gonna look at doing it earlier, and I think the Wednesday, the 24th, seemed to be the consensus for the Board of Adjustment. Does that work for you guys, except for you?
I'm having surgery.
That'll work for you, Chase?
No, I'm having surgery on the 24th.
He was gonna be gone regardless.
Oh, yeah, you weren't gonna be here anyway.
I was gonna be gone anyway on the 25th.
But for everybody else, it seems to work. I don't think we'll have a real heavy.
I'll make it work.
Okay.
Getting surgery for?
My guts.
Having surgery last week.
That was, yep, that was all I needed.
Make a motion to adjourn.
Second it.
All in favor?
Aye.